All right, ready when you are.
Good. All right, I am going to call to order the Folsom Regular City Council Meeting for Tuesday, May 28th, 2024. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Council members Rohba?
Yes.
Aquino?
Here.
Chalim Cherler?
Here.
Rodriguez?
Here.
And Kozlowski?
Here. And if everybody will please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
All right, excellent. Okay, we're going to start this evening with business from the floor. This is an opportunity for people to speak to the city council on items that are not already on the agenda. Please call the first speaker.
Okay, you have four requests this evening on your business from the floor. I'll let you know who's the next speaker up and then who's after that, so if you want to be ready. And once you come up, we'll start the timer for our three minutes. So our first speaker tonight will be Sherri Richter. Sherri will be followed by Walter Little.
All right, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. When my husband and I moved to Folsom three years ago, we considered many of the cities surrounding us. They were all very nice, but not as unique and truly distinctive as Folsom. In the 2023 State of the City speech, it was stated that "The council strives to build on the city's legacy and vibrancy and as leaders to leave it better than you found it." Those values align with our own, and that is why we enjoy living here. Geographically, Folsom is stunning with the Folsom Lake, the American River, the bridges, the California State Parks, and all the trails and pathways. Socially, it offers something for everyone, young and old alike. It has a small-town feel and is unique with its historic downtown, aquatic center, Harris Center, but for the past 61 years, the Folsom City Zoo Sanctuary has also been an integral component of Folsom's history, improving our quality of life and attracting significant outside interest in tourism dollars. Upon moving here, I Googled the top 10 things to do in Folsom, and the zoo is near the top of the list. Anyone who visits can see the dedication of the zookeepers, grantscreepers, and volunteers who support the animals and visitors. Each animal has a rescue story that connects them with both children and adults. The animals are treated with such love that many exceed the life expectancy of a captive animal. If you question the importance of this treasure, please come by on a Thursday or Friday morning when the zoo is teeming with excited schoolchildren learning about the importance of respecting animals and their habitats. For such a small facility, its outreach and impact are phenomenal. In addition to onsite education, we bring the zoo to classrooms through our outreach programs. Storytimes are held at the zoo and in town at Karen's Bakery each month. During the summer, there is ABC Zoo Camp for small children and junior and senior zookeeper camps for older ones. We are present and active in several offsite events in the surrounding areas, bringing our message to our neighboring communities. The zoo is an amazing tourist draw. We frequently hear stories of people who visited as children and now bring their children and grandchildren to visit. I even spoke to a young man who had come to say goodbye to the zoo before he left for college. If you really want to get into the Christmas spirit, visit during holiday lights when the zoo is transformed into a winter wonderland. In addition to the staff, the Folsom Zoo involves many community volunteers, including 79 docents who last year donated over 9,000 hours of service, providing tours and other services. Recently, I completed the CAPS course through the police and fire departments. I was very impressed with the professionalism and dedication exemplified by the officers who taught the class. It is that same dedication to excellence that you will find in the employees and volunteers at the Folsom Zoo. It is a place like the zoo that truly makes Folsom distinctive by nature, standing out among the other cities throughout the Sacramento area. Having served for six years on the Los Gatos Parks Commission, I have a strong appreciation for the parks and rec departments and how they impact the quality of life of a community. As future budgets are discussed, please consider that Folsom is the sum of its parts, of which the Folsom City Zoo Sanctuary is an integral component in the history and personality of the city. We hope you agree that the zoo is a gem to be both treasured and supported. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, our next speaker will-
Perfectly, three minutes.
Our next speaker will be Walter Little, who will be followed by Judy Alexander.
Good evening, gentle people. My name is Walter Little, and I am a certified instructor of an international program called Stop the Bleed. It was begun in 2016 by the Department of Homeland Security and the American College of Surgeons, and is a program that was designed specifically for response of nonprofessional personnel to the shootings that happened in Sandy Hook. And the program turns out to be more than just applicable to the active shooters. It was discovered quite quickly, and you'll see it on the pie chart that I gave you, that its application is appropriate for every single walk of life. The program itself was designed so that it's very simple. It only takes an hour and 15 minutes to completely train people, and it's absolutely free. It has become so popular that it's gone around the world, and it is now in at least seven, if not more, states as of this point. It is mandated by the state of California that as of January of this year, all new construction in the entire state must have Stop the Bleed kits next to the AEDs and first aid kits. In order to do that, they have to train people to do that. I am coming before you just to let you know that I am the authorized representative for the city of Rancho Cordova, and I was invited by one of your personnel to join you this evening and just kind of give you a heads up. So I have a couple of questions. Did somebody walk through that door with a machine gun or whatever? How many of you know where your first aid kit is? How many of you know where? Yeah, okay. How many of you know where your AED is should you help? And how many know what to do should you be faced with a massive bleeding incident? The importance of this program is self-sustaining. I have trained police officers across the state of California. I have trained the personnel from the Folsom-Cordova Unified School District. Last year, I trained all of the first line of defense, which are the yard duty personnel, and every one of them came away with the same statement. Now I have the feeling I can do something. The most important thing is you've got to get that deer-in-the-headlights attitude out of your way. I've already said, oh, the important thing is how this came, excuse me, how this came into being again was as a result of the war in Afghanistan, what they determined was by the simple use of a tourniquet, which you saw me do, there was an 80%, reduction in mortality. That's unbelievable. And as you have given me three minutes to give you this presentation, in a worst-case scenario, somebody just died. And your personnel, safety personnel, they already know how to do this. They don't need to be trained. But there are more and more Stop the Bleed, active shooter drills that are saying to the people, the teachers, you need to take this class.
Walt, thank you very much.
I appreciate that, sir. God bless. And I left information on the table for anyone in the audience that would like to take a look at it. Thank you again.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker, next speaker will be Judy Alexander, who will be followed by Michael Harris.
Good evening. I'd like to thank, first of all, the mayor and council member Aquino for hosting the April meeting on homelessness in Folsom. Most of the suggestions to council and staff were regarding criminal behavior issues. Certainly, that is part of the equation, but the majority of people who are homeless aren't criminals. I encourage you to take seriously some of the additional suggestions voiced at the last council meeting. We desperately need education from the Attorney General, social workers at Dignity Health, homeless advocate at the school district, representatives from the county continuum of care, administrators of the Folsom Lake College Homeless Outreach, and I'm sure there's others that I haven't mentioned. And you must continue to include the public in these conversations. The number-one contributing factor to chronic adult homelessness is youth homelessness. So let's ask the experts about that. Perhaps the schools, Powerhouse, and Folsom's Hope could help our understanding of this part of the equation. There was also a mention to rehire a professional navigator who would be responsible for gathering data and coordinating interactions helpful to our community. At the top of the city webpage, it says, quote, "Folsom is committed to working with regional and local partners to offer compassionate and sustainable help to those in need." Who on staff is committed to carry out this statement? At the bottom of the page, it says, "The city does not provide direct services to persons experiencing homelessness." What would be indirect services that the city offers? Perhaps these could, we could have some answers on that. The well-ordered life falls apart. People get depressed, and they isolate. They start abusing alcohol or prescription meds. Suddenly, us becomes them. The family is dysfunctional. A DUI or abuse charge leads to a job loss or medical emergency, depression, shame, hiding. We need to know how to reach into lives with compassionate and sustainable help, as the website says. We are smart, creative, able citizens. We need humanitarian assistance to have the same priority as buildings and sewers. We need a plan. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker will be Michael Harris. Michael will be followed by Janet Kurtz-Puja.
Welcome, Michael.
Good evening, mayor, council, executive staff. I like y'all. Y'all good. So I'm here tonight. It was just like a beautiful day yesterday, Memorial Day, and some people still saying Happy Memorial Day. They didn't know any fellow veterans that, you know, died with their uniform on it. It's not a happy day, but it's a day to remember. And so, no different than Juneteenth and, you know, the native indigenous people here that Herb Weford, Herb Puffer, when he died probably about 16, 17 years ago, there's absolutely no good information about the indigenous community unless you know where to look or they're one of your friends. And that is the same thing that's happened to people of African descent. A lot of us know that the town was Negro Bar when William Alexander Leidersdorf, African founding father, owned the place back in 1844. And Juneteenth, 1865, is a federal holiday. It's a federal holiday. And unfortunately or fortunately, depend on which day of the month, which day of the week is, my job is the Western United States. I'm trying to resign, but they won't accept it because not too many people crazy enough to go do this stuff free. So the state of California, there's like 58 counties and 150 with 100,000 people. So I get the assignment to call people and say, hey, yo, when y'all gonna do city council meeting and have Juneteenth as a paid holiday? So I would be remiss not to come here, walk across the street and say, hey, look, this is what it is. So back in 2003, this was a front-page newspaper in the Sacramento Observer, the number-one black newspaper in America, the Sacramento Observer. And on the cover is Bill Pettis, who raises Morgan horses out in, near Rio Linda. And I need to go see him, his wife passed. But I ain't gonna lie, he might be 92. He's in his 90s. And then also what's being scrubbed is this is the Underground Railroad Network to Freedom, and some of y'all know, you know, sometimes you have to tell history in a good, positive way. So we had Don Silva, who has the Underground Railroad to the funk. You know, she's like this world-renowned brides-to-funk sign, you know? You do this history, you collect good friends. But this is serious. The National Park Service Executive Order 13985 is talking about we need to do more of this. So 25 years ago, in and around Folsom, particularly at the state park, was part of the Underground Railroad Network to Freedom at Sac State. That information has been scrubbed from Sac State. So now they're doing this big black honors program, this great thing. I'm like, whoa, 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 whoa. Can y'all just honor the people that were here 175 years ago? Let's just start there. So they're paying people like $15 million to like regurgitate this stuff, which is crazy, but that's what they're doing. So I'm just here, we're not gonna do a big thing like we have in the past. They're doing something at state park, they won't tell me. But we're still keeping what we're doing. So on the fifth, no, on the seventh, Friday, we're gonna do Juneteenth right out here in the backyard and celebrate freedom like we always do with the red, white, and blue of the colored troops that fought for our freedom.
Thank you, Michael.
Okay, your last speaker on your business from the floor is Janet Kurtz-Puja. And I'm sorry if I'm not saying that correctly. Puga.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for welcoming me. My name is Jan Kurtz-Puga. I have been a Folsom resident for longer than most people. Originally of Lexington Hills, I would like to bring up a passion, project of mine, which is Castle Park, AKA Kids Play Park. The city of Folsom has a motto which is distinctive by nature, and I don't think you can get much more distinctive than Castle Park. However, we're aware that it needs work. I've recently become aware of discussions regarding our beloved neighborhood park. As a Lexington Hills resident for almost 40 years, I was involved in helping to not only fundraise but also build the park. Those green triangle pyramids, that's me. I'm extremely invested in seeing it continue to exist. My three now-adult children and I were part of the team who painted and maintained many parts of this park alongside our neighbors for many years. Our family has one of the many cherished tiles that you see in the park that represent all of those to help make this beloved family park, neighborhood park, possible. And now as a grandparent, it's a place that I treasure taking my grandchildren to and sharing our personal connection. I hope that you also understand its importance and value to the residents of Folsom. I know that there are many fiscal challenges that the city is facing, and I feel a little silly saying, please give our park some money instead of like the fire or the police. But I'm asking that the city not only make the park a priority to remain open, but direct the city manager to allocate, identify and allocate funds for the reconstruction of Castle Park for the 2024-2025 budget. The inception of this park came from the neighborhood, and it is likely to require neighborhoods' involvement monetarily once again. And from all of the folks with whom I've spoken, this is what they want. They're willing to do that. I ask the council to partner with the neighborhood and show the council's commitment to its residents by allocating funds to make the necessary upgrades to prevent the park from being closed, because I'm quite aware that is on the table. I'm open to discuss my views in person with any council member who would like to reach out, given my personal history with the park. I would also like to thank Kelly Gonzalez, who provided excellent service, and I look forward to many continued discussions. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you very much. All right, are there any agenda updates, Mr. City Attorney?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. There is additional information transmittal for item 6 on tonight's agenda. A copy has been previously provided to the council, and it is also available on the table in the back.
Excellent. All right, that takes us to scheduled presentations, which-
Yeah, your first scheduled presentation this evening is City of Folsom Resolution of Commendation, celebrating 25 years of Folsom City Zoo Sanctuary volunteer service by docent Sue Spielman. Come on up, Sue.
I'm gonna get this ready for your speech.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, well, let me please hand you this. This is your commendation, and I'm gonna read it to everybody for it on your behalf. Okay. City of Folsom Resolution of Commendation, celebrating 25 years of Folsom City Zoo Sanctuary volunteer service by docent Sue Spielman. Sue Spielman began volunteering, began volunteering at the zoo sanctuary 25 years ago as a docent, dedicated to our educational mission of teaching responsible behavior toward all animals. And Sue has cumulatively donated more than 26,500 volunteer hours while consistently going above and beyond in all areas. I can't, I can't say for sure I've spent 26,000 hours doing anything. Maybe sleeping. Sue currently volunteers as the docent chairperson overseeing and coordinating school tours for more than 6,500 annual participants and generating over $50,000 in revenue. And Sue currently tracks hours and requirements for all docents and assists with uniform ordering process. Sue has served as the volunteer animal handler, docent council treasurer, vice president, and Friends liaison. And Sue also stepped into the suddenly vacant role of Friends of the Zoo treasurer in 2021 and has been instrumental in obtaining various permits for fundraising activities and overseeing preparation of the Friends' annual budget and tax returns. Sue's unique talents, unwavering support, vast historical zoo knowledge, and creativity to solve extreme challenges have benefited the zoo sanctuary in myriad ways, in myriad ways. And Sue embodies the values of integrity, dedication, and excellence, serving as a role model for her fellow volunteers. I feel like I should be giving you an Eagle Scout Award. And the zoo sanctuary is a better place because of Sue's tireless dedication and passion. Now, therefore, I, Mike Kozlowski, Mayor of the City of Folsom, on behalf of the Folsom City Council and the residents of this community, do hereby thank volunteer Sue Spielman for being an extremely valuable volunteer to the City of Folsom for 25 years, passed and approved this 28th day of May, 2024.
Oh, my. Yeah, I'm reading through this as Mayor Kozlowski is talking, and I'm going, whoa. It's humbling. Thank you. Thank you very much. But this award doesn't belong to me alone. It belongs to all the docents, our green shirts here this evening, for their support and help, and past and present docents, because it's been built to the level that it is from their dedication, not just my own. I just happen to be the last man stand, or woman, whatever, standing after 25 years. But there are many who have made it a wonderful program to be a part of. But it also belongs to Jocelyn, the zoo staff, to the parks and rec directors, I see a couple here tonight, and their staffs who supported us all along the way, provided education that allowed us to reach out to so many people and touch lives, especially those of schoolchildren. And as Sherri pointed out earlier, we are a team of 79 docents currently, and we will probably exceed that hours, over 9,000 hours in this year. We're well on our way. As the accountant of the group, I track all the hours, so it's like, yes, go. So anyway, yeah, it's amazing. What do I say? And, and thank you to, seriously, past and present council members for understanding and recognizing how great an asset the Folsom Zoo is and what a unique gem of a facility that we have here. The work that they, is down there is amazing. It's a truly wonderful, wild place to work, and I don't know what else to say besides thank you, everybody. It's quite amazing.
All right, please call the next item.
Your next item is our scheduled presentation, item number two. This is a presentation by the Sacramento Yolo, mosquito, and vector control district. And presenting for you tonight will be the PIO Luz Maria Robles.
Good evening.
All right, good evening. Thank you guys so much for having me. As I was introduced, my name is Luz Maria Robles. I'm the district's public information officer for the last almost 16 years, so I know a thing or two about mosquitoes, and tonight I am here to give you guys an update as to what we can expect for the next mosquito season. So have you guys been bitten by mosquitoes already?
Yes.
Unfortunately, I have been bitten a lot myself, so I hope that, you know, with today's update, that you guys will just go away with some recommendations or at least have a better idea as to how Folsom is doing in regards to mosquito activity. All right, so as you guys know, we are the local district charged with protecting residents against mosquitoes and mosquito-transmitted diseases. We provide services to Sacramento and Yolo County, and our district started in 1946. We operate under the California Health and Safety Code, and again, our main mission is to make sure that we're controlling mosquitoes to a level where they're not posing a public health threat to residents within our district area. In order to control mosquitoes, we do utilize a, what we call an integrated mosquito management approach that includes all of these parts. So public information, I head our communications department, so I am the one that's responsible for our Fight the Bite campaigns that includes ads on television, on radio, and digital advertising, all with the intent of trying to make sure that people are draining their stagnant water, that they're doing everything that they can on their property to ensure that they're not breeding mosquitoes. After listening to the wonderful presentation to the zoo, it makes me really want to come and give the zoo repellent and work together to make sure that all the, you know, the kids that are coming to the zoo or people visiting the zoo are staying protected with repellent. So we'll have to make sure to connect with the docents. So as part of our public information, too, we also offer free mosquito repellent wipes for any of your city activities that you might be having. I present to city groups, so if there's any organization that you think would benefit from a presentation, I'm happy to give that. Our surveillance program, so we have one of the largest surveillance programs in the state. Our laboratory is in charge of tracking and monitoring West Nile virus activity. So they set traps to collect mosquitoes, they bring the mosquitoes back, they test them for West Nile virus, and we also do a lot of work with ticks. Lyme disease is actually an issue here in our area. Last week, we were actually doing a news story on the amount of ticks that we've collected along the American River Parkway, different areas around Folsom where we do collect ticks, and they do test positive for Lyme disease. Our biological control department, that's basically our fisheries. We have the largest mosquito fish rearing facility in the country. We have many ponds where we rear these mosquito fish, and we give them free to people that have a pond, a fountain, a horse trough. We put them in the creeks and streams, lots of different areas where these mosquito fish go, and they help us control mosquitoes naturally. Our ecological management department, that's basically, we have a department that works with landowners to make sure that they're not breeding mosquitoes on their property. And then our control operations department, that's like our boots on the ground. They're the, our field guys that go out and conduct the pre-home service inspections. So if anybody's having issues with mosquitoes, they can call us, and we'll go out, conduct an inspection, provide free recommendations as to what they can do around their home to ensure that they're not breeding mosquitoes. So altogether, these elements form what we call our Integrated Mosquito Management Approach to mosquito control. As you know, mosquitoes come from different breeding habitats. I think to most people, a mosquito is a mosquito, all you want to do is kill it. But here in our area, we have about 27 different species of mosquitoes that are active at different times of the year. So the mosquitoes that you see in the spring are probably not the ones that you see in the fall. So, you know, our district knows where the creeks are, where the rice fields are, all the ag areas, but it's the small mosquito breeding sources in people's backyards that actually are the biggest problem for us, right? So mosquito control is a two-way approach. We rely on the fact that homeowners do their part and dump out sources of stagnant water so they're not producing mosquitoes, right? The dog dish, the plant saucer, the bucket, anything that can hold water for more than a few days can and will become a mosquito breeding source. In the peak of summer, mosquitoes can go from an egg to an flying adult in as little as four to seven days. And when you think about the fact that one female mosquito can lay between 50 to 200 eggs at a time, three times a week, that gives you an idea of why we have so many mosquito problems. You're lacking stress, Mr. Mayor. Anyway, so the point of this is that there's many mosquito sources. A couple weeks ago, we had a lot of rain, and then that was followed by really hot temperatures. So that combination of the warm, of the water with the, with the warm temperatures is what creates the ideal mosquito breeding conditions. It kind of gives mosquitoes a head start for the summer. So again, draining sources of stagnant water is extremely important. All right, so could 2024 be another intense mosquito season? We think it is, unfortunately. Last year was one of the most intense seasons for West Nile virus. We had a lot of rain, we had a lot of breeding sources where mosquitoes were growing. So we saw a sharp increase in the amount of West Nile virus activity, and there's concern that this year could also be an intense one. So you can see that thankfully, there was very little West Nile virus activity in the city- So unfortunately, there were also a few fatalities, five fatalities in Sacramento County. As far as state numbers, last year, there were 428 human cases of West Nile virus, including 19 fatalities. And the CDC estimates that for every single case that is actually diagnosed and reported, there's 30 to 70 cases that go unreported. So, you know, in reality, there's probably a lot more than 428. But as you can see, also, there was more than double the amount of cases in 2023 than there were in '22. All right. So in terms of, the other issue that we have aside from West Nile virus is invasive mosquitoes. That's our newest threat. These are new mosquitoes that, as the name implies, they're non-native to California. We first found them within our district area in 2019, and ever since, they've been spreading to different areas. Luckily, they have not been found in Folsom, but these are aggressive, day-biting mosquitoes that prefer to bite people. The native mosquitoes that transmit West Nile virus, they typically prefer to bite birds, and they're more active at dawn and dusk, whereas these mosquitoes can be active at all times of the day. So they can breed indoors and outdoors, they can breed in as little as a teaspoon of water, which I know is, you know, can be hard to believe, but then, you know, so this is why they're such a big problem. So once they're established in any given area, they can be extremely difficult to control, and also, they pose a threat for new diseases such as Zika, dengue, and chikungunya, diseases that are not so common here in California, but very common in other parts of the world. And every year, we do see these cases, but they've always been travel-related. However, last year, for the first time ever, there was two locally acquired dengue cases in Southern California. So the fact that we do have these mosquitoes here, you know, basically opens the door for a variety of different diseases. Luckily, there are no invasive mosquitoes in Folsom yet, but we have many infestations in Sacramento County. These mosquitoes, they, you know, it's as easy as, you know, sharing plants, as easy as maybe, they can travel, hitchhike, you know, you go somewhere, for instance, my parents live in winters, there's a big infestation there, Yolo County. I can open my window, a mosquito can get in my car. I live in Atomas, I get home, I roll my window down, and then, you know, they basically, that's how they're being transported from one place to another. So again, no invasive mosquitoes in Folsom, thankfully, but many infestations in Sacramento County, the biggest ones being Arden, Rosemont area, so not very far from, you know, where we're at here. So unfortunately, as I said, these are, they pose a threat for new diseases such as Zika and dengue. So with that, that's not such a positive note to end on, but the good news is that, you know, invasive mosquitoes are not found here yet, and as we kind of go into the summer season, you know, my, my recommendation would be just to make sure that you're, one, draining those sources of stagnant water, and two, protecting yourself with an effective repellent anytime you're spending time outdoors.
Okay. Sounded like the headline of that was shop and recreate local.
There you go. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Not, not a question, but just kind of a add-on comment. There's a, there's a really, there's a couple of really interesting books about the building of the Panama Canal and the massive failure that that project was for decades until somebody figured out how to do mosquito control and actually stopped everybody that was working on the canal from dying from tropical diseases. So that was actually how it got finished, is by clearing the mosquitoes out.
Okay. And then I would also just like, like to introduce our board member. He is, our board member Craig Burnett, has been on our board since 19, or for more than 46 years.
Forty-six years.
Forty-six years, the longest board member. He does an excellent job at representing the City of Folsom, bringing information from our district back here, so just like to highlight the service that he provides for us and for the City of Folsom.
Thank you, Luz. And thank you, members of the city council, for your support of mosquito control. And like Luz said, and like Mr. Kozlowski said, building the Panama Canal with the yellow fever mosquitoes, that's the ones that we're looking at now that contain, that transmit not only yellow fever, which we don't have thankfully in the state, but dengue, Zika, you've heard a lot about Zika several years ago in South America with the brain swelling for the babies and the massive diarrhea. And then dengue is really high in Puerto Rico, it's coming into Florida, and two locally transmitted cases in Southern California. So the critical part is, these mosquitoes don't like big ponds of water. They'll buy, breed in a bottle cap of water, or a dog dish, or an empty tire. And that's responsible in all of us to check our backyards, check around our homes, make sure we have any kind of standing water, make sure it's drained. The other big program we have with the mosquito abatement district is looking for abandoned pools. It was a really big thing during the depression with so many homes, or recession with so many homes went into foreclosure, had a lot of abandoned pools. We still track all sorts of abandoned pools. We do aerial surveillance, we go home to home, we find out where these abandoned pools. We have, I've had neighbors call me and say, you think my neighbor's pool is bad? And I look over the fence, and it's just dark green. It's really bad. Anyway, if you have a concern, get in touch with the mosquito abatement or give them contact with me, and thanks again for all your support.
Thank you for your continued service to Folsom.
Mayor, can I make one quick comment on that?
Certainly.
Once again, thank you so much for proactively doing this. You know, I was born and brought up on the other part of the world. I know the severity of not doing proactively. I know we haven't seen that here because of your work. I want to sincerely thank, pass that thanks to all your board members and staff.
Very good. All righty. Let's move on to our next scheduled presentation.
Okay. Your next item is item number three. This is a presentation of the city manager's fiscal year 2425 proposed operating and capital budgets for the City of Folsom, the successor agency, the Folsom Public Financing Authority, and the Folsom Ranch Public Financing Authority.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I am pleased to present the city manager's fiscal year 202425 proposed operating and capital budgets alongside Chief Financial Officer Stacy Tumani. As the city council knows, this preliminary budget is my best attempt as your city manager to develop what is easiest to think of as a draft budget for the council, matching available and projected dollars to try to meet the right mix of just some of the city's countless needs. I am presenting this draft tonight, and then, as always, it is the council's duty to deliberate, request more information of us as staff if needed, and then make any changes, additions, or deletions to the draft as the council sees fit. The only constraint is that the result meets, must be a balanced budget, and it must be adopted by at least a majority of the council by June 30th, or the preliminary budget automatically becomes the city's fiscal year 202425 budget. Just to clarify, because I know it can get a little confusing, as the city manager, I do not actually vote on the budget. I merely bring the best draft I can, given my professional experience and what I believe to be the resources available. The city council takes it from there in terms of the adoption process. As your city manager, I always start the budget process by seeking direction from the city council as to the percentages the council wishes to assign for the various departments and functions funded by the general fund. As an example, I did that last year before I brought the current fiscal year's budget, and that pie allocation was approved by all five of the council members sitting on this dais unanimously. And then about one year ago today, I brought the draft fiscal year 2324 budget to the city council, and that budget, the one we're in right now, was also approved by all five of the city council members sitting on this dais unanimously in one public hearing. Thank you to the city council for your hard work and your accountability to the current fiscal year 202324 budget, as well as the fiscal year 202425 budget you will ultimately adopt. You have an important role with high stakes consequences. So here we are again, looking forward to the new fiscal year beginning July 1st, and I again used an allocation pie that this council unanimously approved as my foundation in crafting the draft budget you are going to hear more about in a few moments. Many thanks to Stacy Tumani, our CFO, Allison Garcia, our Human Resources Director, our financial services manager, Adam Devlin, for serving as my mighty budget team, and many thanks to my department heads as well. I have spoken to this council and prior councils for many years about the many financial concerns and constraints this city is facing, because, because I've delivered many comprehensive presentations on the subject many times already, just this calendar year alone. I'm just going to quickly list them off before we dive into the rest. Our five-year forecast predicts a general fund structural deficit as the cost to provide services grows at a faster pace than revenues. That is particularly hard to deal with when 72% of our budget is spent on salaries and benefits, and about 50% of our general fund budget is appropriately dedicated to public safety. Our general fund unassigned fund balance, sometimes referred to as the rainy day fund, is shockingly low compared to other jurisdictions and would be depleted in very short order if we were to turn to it to cover our projected annual budget shortfalls. Low reserve levels threaten the city's ability to provide essential services in the future. We have a concerning flattening sales tax revenue trend. We're now averaging about 2% growth per year, and prior city managers and city councils could reliably count on a growth rate of about 6% per year. That's a huge difference. Meanwhile, our costs, including employee costs as we seek to offer competitive compensation packages to our very deserving employees, continue to climb well past our projected revenue growth. There are millions of dollars, estimated at least $20 million annually, of unfunded or underfunded needs that the city has been deferring year after year. Our stuff is aging out, and we aren't fixing and/or replacing it, or even setting aside funds for that purpose. We face uncertainty in terms of the city's future CalPERS contribution requirements. Each year that CalPERS investment returns do not meet a certain threshold, the city will see an increase in our required contribution in a future year. This is unpredictable and out of the city's control, and yet it can dramatically and adversely affect our budget. We are drawing from the reserve balance in the risk management fund, and we're not replenishing it. This fund will run dry quickly if not replenished, and we struggle, as we struggle with significant and unpredictable increases in property insurance and employee health insurance in particular. And we have growing service level needs in the Folsom Plan area that will require additions to future budgets. All that said, our budget continues to grow just at a slower rate. There have been comments made that departments have been cut or defunded. This is absolutely not correct. All departments have a bigger budget than they did last year, as they do with the budget I am proposing tonight, but the difference in growth is just smaller than we're used to, and that's made for hard choices. Just to give you a flavor, for this budget cycle alone, I received requests for 71 positions and over $38.7 million of very reasonable, very needed asks from our department heads, most of which I had to decline for purposes of this proposed budget. And honestly, I don't believe those totals truly reflect the total need, because department heads just aren't even bothering to submit for all kinds of things now, because they know the pie just isn't big enough to accommodate them. The proposed budget you're going to hear about tonight recommends just 11 positions, eight of which are funded in the budget, and about $3.4 million in requests, which includes about $1.7 million in a use of unassigned fund balance, that's the rainy day fund I referred to earlier, that I'll explain more about in a bit. Although this budget does not propose the complete elimination of any programs, it also does not fully fund many current programs, and that's a critical missing piece. The cumulative detrimental effect of that lack of full funding is unfortunately becoming more and more obvious with each passing year. One example is park maintenance. It is estimated that the city would need at least $1.5 million for park maintenance services this upcoming year to uphold the current maintenance standards our park users have grown to expect in Folsom. However, this budget only allows for an allocation of $974,000 to park maintenance, and that's just an increase of just $50,000 over the current budget. Due to this shortfall, there will be a noticeable decline in regular park maintenance. Another example lies in capital purchases for the police, police department. $930,000 was requested for ongoing police vehicle replacements for fiscal year 2425, and this budget only provides for $500,000 worth, the same amount we have in the current budget. Similarly, in the fire department, requests for high priority technology items such as securing additional cardiac monitors, replacing aging thermal imaging cameras, and adding mobile computer terminal conversions could not be funded this year. We also could not find, fund more firefighters, and so our fire chief will again struggle with rising overtime costs once Fire Station 34 is open and nine firefighters that we have now are deployed there. In the public works department, we were unable to propose funding for much-needed roof repairs in a key corp yard shop, and we were also unable to fund replacement of fleet equipment that is currently over 20 years old, including mobile column lifts, a brake lathe, and a parts washer. These examples are merely a sampling of a long and growing list that is demonstrative of an inability to fund very basic departmental needs to maintain current operations in this budget. Our service levels and maintenance standards will inevitably slip in many areas. This is not catastrophic, but it is far from ideal. Just like a household budget, we will live within our means. With slowing revenue growth coming into our city household, we can't buy the big Hawaiian vacation, we can't buy the new car, or the bigger house, or a lot of other things we really need or want, but we can pay the routine bills and get some important things taken care of. So rather than bury the lead, I'm just going to name off some of those important things funded out of the general fund that I've proposed in this draft budget, and then Stacy's going to take it from there to provide more detail and context on the general fund and speak to the enterprise funds and the capital improvement budget as well. I'm proposing to add a homeless outreach team to our police department. This means six new positions for the police department, including one sergeant, one corporal, and four officers. Due largely to judicial and legal changes that came about right as I was becoming your city manager, we continue to deal with challenges associated with some who are unhoused, including disturbances, funding for outreach to offer services, thefts, and assaults. Chief Hellman and I have worked together before to ensure funding for focused efforts on these challenges, but the competing organized retail theft trend has understandably diverted police resources in that direction instead. This dedicated homeless outreach team, also called a HOT team, would provide these important services seven days a week. At the chief's request, if this is approved, the police department will also be assuming responsibility for encampment cleanups and response to complaints and concerns expressed by our community about homelessness and encampments through See, Click, Fix, and other platforms. We managed to propose to fund this team through the revenue growth we already expected, which allowed for three of the positions, and then by deploying the department's vacancy rate toward three more positions, thus continuing to live within the pie the council established and adopted unanimously. The strategy for the latter three is basically deploying an over-hire policy, knowing that due to injuries, retirements, and the length of recruitment processes, among other factors, that we safely had some wiggle room for me to allow the chief to go ahead and hire. It's a relatively low-risk way for us to get what we need now in terms of personnel. We deployed a similar strategy in the fire department as we built towards staffing future Fire Station 34. I am proposing a division chief dedicated to training for our fire department. This is something I have been hoping to be able to propose for many years, but have been unable to due to the need for firefighters to staff that future Fire Station 34, which will open this fall. Folsom Fire previously had a training division chief position that was eliminated following budget reductions resulting from the Great Recession back in 2008. This position is extremely important to the fire department. The training division chief will be responsible for researching, planning, developing, and coordinating training for all Folsom Fire personnel to ensure compliance with state and federal guidelines and rules. Additionally, the position will certify that personnel are competent and trained to efficiently, effectively, and safely execute all responsibilities consistent with the department's standard operating guidelines for emergency services delivery. The position would also be tasked with preparing monthly and budget, monthly and annual budget reports, the department's budget, recruitment, promotional testing, and special projects as assigned. I am proposing a new park planner two position specific to the Folsom Plan area for our Parks and Recreation Department. Our park planning team is woefully understaffed. With over 140 acres of new parks planned south of 50, along with 30 miles of trails and trail bridges, this position is critical to staying consistent with the Folsom Plan area specific plan and delivering those amenities. operating guidelines for emergency services delivery. The position would also be tasked with preparing monthly and annual budget reports, the department's budget, recruitment, promotional testing, and special projects as assigned. I am proposing a new Park Planner II position specific to the Folsom Plan area for our Parks and Recreation Department. Our park planning team is woefully understaffed. With over 140 acres of new parks planned south of 50, along with 30 miles of trails and trail bridges, this position is critical to staying consistent with the Folsom Plan Area specific plan and delivering those amenities. In addition, while park and trail development on the north side of 50 is slowing down, there is an abundance of work related to supporting the renovation needs of our city's existing parks and facilities. Similarly, I'm proposing a new maintenance worker position in the Parks and Recreation Department, specific to the Folsom Plan area, to help us keep pace with the countless proactive and reactive fixes needed for a community that embraces our parks and trails. I am proposing two new maintenance workers in our Public Works Department for assistance with streets and traffic. I am proposing that the Community Development Department convert to a Blue Beam Plan Check program and cloud-based permit software to improve services and efficiency to our customers. And finally, I'm also proposing that this council approve a one-time use of that rainy day fund, the unassigned fund balance, for four very important needs. The first is funding for the exceptionally long overdue renovation of Kids Play Park, also sometimes called Castle Park. My husband, children, and I, along with so many Folsom families, and I see Joanne Broussard back there, she's, we're of the same era, have spent many happy hours there, going back nearly three decades. This park is close to 30 years old. Those small children are now adults, but that is 15 years past its recommended life cycle. It was originally constructed with the help of wonderful community volunteers back in 1996. Despite many years of maintenance and repairs at this park, including custom modifications to keep the park functional and safe, we've reached a point now where we're forced to just remove key components once they wear out. In fact, park maintenance staff have removed about 40% of one of the playground structures. Playground safety requirements have changed over the years. This structure has been modified to eliminate entrapment hazards as well as safety falls zones. The modifications are no longer viable due to the overall age and degradation of the structure. Treated wood elements are rotting and no longer capable of supporting the play structure feature. The structure is currently made from pressure-treated wood, which since 2003 is no longer authorized by the Consumer Product Safety Commission, which regulates playground safety in the United States. We are in the process of assessing the entire structure with a certified playground inspector, and I'm proposing that we rebuild this iconic park. The second use of our rainy day fund that I'm proposing is new tables, chairs, and kitchen equipment for the Folsom Community Center. The tables and chairs at our well-loved and well-rented community center are over 20 years old, and I don't think showing their age even captures their bedraggled condition. A majority of the tables have some sort of damage, and a majority of the chairs have permanent stains and small holes that cannot be repaired. As for the kitchen equipment, the double-deck gas convection ovens, gas ranges, standard ovens, charboil grills, and braising pans are original to the building, which was built in 1992. All of these appliances are well over their life expectancy and several fail with regularity. They are proving to not be trustworthy to customers renting the kitchen, and those paying customers have understandably complained. The third use of the rainy day fund that I'm recommending is the replacement of a failing lighting control system and malfunctioning doors at the library. I would like the lighting and the doors to work at the library. And the final use of the unassigned fund balance that I propose is a network storage replacement in the Information Systems Division of our Finance Department. Our primary data storage systems are coming to the end of life and need to be replaced in order to continue to serve data and files to the city as a whole. With that, I will turn it over to Stacy to go through this with some more detail. I think you'll find that other than what I've highlighted so far, the rest of the budget is generally either funded out of the enterprise funds, or if it's general fund, it's just truing up expenditures that we're already obligated to spend due to rising costs. So I'll turn it over to you, Stacy. Thank you.
Before you turn it over, I just want to clarify, I don't believe that we made a particular motion to approve the pie chart. I believe it was just consensus that you asked for.
Everyone agreed.
I didn't, I didn't shake my head, yes. Because of last year, when we approved the pie chart, same kind of thing with consensus, the police were funded at 26%, and then you funded them at 25%. Did not catch that at the budget. So just to clarify, that was not unanimous. And then second, I see in the budget that you funded the police department, or you're proposing in your draft budget to fund the police department with three positions, but you keep, you also said it in the budget that there's six positions for HOT teams. So where do you, where are you going to suggest the police department fills out that HOT team? Where are you going to pull from their department?
Yeah, I think I went through that, and I'll be happy to go through it again. So what we're doing, and Chief concurs, is we're using the dollars that we set aside for their vacancy rate. So due to retirement, there's been a lot of retirement in the police department, there are a lot of injuries, understandably, workers comp, there's a lengthy recruitment process that provides some give, that we feel that we can safely give him the go-ahead to give him those positions and have him hire. Usually, those funds are used in departments to, you know, pick up little things here and there, and so Chief won't have that same kind of flexibility, but he will have a full HOT team. And so we were doing that to stay within the pie chart.
I believe we're down, I think the last, I was three, three a month ago or so, and I think it's just one or close to. So when, when we authorize the three positions and they're fully staffed, where are you going to pull those other three bodies from? Because there will not be salary savings at that time. And in fact, in the last several months, it's been said by the finance director and yourself that it was $80,000 in salary savings they had a couple months ago, then all of a sudden, a month ago, they only had $20,000 in salary savings. So as my colleague next to me also said, that's not going to get very far for three more positions. So when those positions are fully staffed, where are you going to pull the additional three positions that you're suggesting we have a six-person HOT team from? And then also, I'm hearing that you're adding code enforcement to some of the code enforcement to police department, which works with a six fully funded HOT team. So are you going to pull it from the detectives? I mean, you can't pull it from south of 50 because they don't have regular patrols. So still, I mean, you're only, you're only suggesting we fund three positions for a six-person team, so that means we're going to have to pull from somewhere. Because the salary savings were only, I mean, it keeps changing, but $80,000 or $20,000 this year, even if it's $100,000, that's not even one full position.
So the trend of the salary savings is such that I feel very comfortable allowing that flux of those three positions, and then, and we can have a fully funded HOT team without pulling from anywhere else. We are pulling from that vacancy rate, and then as we move forward in future years, as the budget continues to grow, it will slowly absorb those positions, but they will have six positions for the HOT team.
The only reason there is a vacancy rate is if there's a vacancy. And if those, the positions are fully staffed, there will not be a vacancy. So where are you going to pull those three salary payments from? Are you going to do it from the contingency fund?
No. So vacancies are not, what we're pulling from is the nod to the, all the positions who are not currently out there.
Correct. I understand, and maybe you're saying that for people that don't understand what a salary savings are. But it was just said, I'm just using real numbers here, this is what I'm asking. It was quoted, I think it was the last, it was two weeks ago or the previous month, that we were, they only had $20,000 in salary savings at this point in the end of the budget. So the likelihood of them having 20, or 300,000, well, three officers, you have it in the budget, 650,000. The likelihood of them having $650,000 by the end of the year compared to this year of only having 20,000 is pretty unlikely. So if we're going to fully fund a HOT team of six people, where are we going to get that money? The salary savings from past budgets are not going to cover it.
So if I can jump in here?
Sure.
There's, the employment of any of our employees doesn't start and end on July 1st, so there's always a ramp-up period where we're trying to hire and a ramp-down period when somebody has left mid-year. So there become voids in staffing across all departments, and this is basically taking those and using them as leverage to give the chief the right to hire ahead, because he can't hire unless he has a position to fill. So what we're saying is that you have three additional positions, so he can hire more aggressively so that we have less of a vacancy rate, so we get it closer to zero rather than whatever it is.
I understand what a salary saving, thank you. I mean, I do, and I think that helps other people too, but what I'm, what I'm asking is from the math that we have today, from the numbers from this year and previous years, there is not going to be enough salary savings to fund three more positions. So, I mean, maybe one position we can get away with? So this obviously is a concern of mine, that we're saying we're funding six, but we're not funding six. We're funding three in this budget for sure, if we pass this budget the way it's presented. So this will be something that I would like to continue to talk about. So that's enough on this for now. Stacy?
I just wanted to clarify that the savings was total savings within the department, not just salary savings. It was combined, so it's over expenditures on other budget items and savings on the salary, and then combined was the figure you were mentioning. But I'll get started on my slides here. So thank you, Elaine, and good evening, mayor and council members. I'm Stacy Tumani, Chief Financial Officer, and tonight I'm happy to present the rest of the city manager's proposed budget here. But before I dive into the presentation, I just wanted to take a chance to express a huge thank you to my entire team in the Finance Department, and in particular, our Financial Services Manager, Adam Devlin, who's sitting right there. Adam has worked tirelessly alongside me, burning the midnight oil and sacrificing weekends over the past few months to help us reach this point. With our very small team, this budget process is always a monumental task, and this year it felt nearly impossible. We've had some incredibly tough challenges in our department, and Adam's dedication has been instrumental. So just wanted to thank you sincerely. And so with that, I will dive into my slides here. We do this every year, just showing how we're balancing the budget and how we prepare for this. We start with projecting total revenues, and that's the top line there. We're estimating a $6.8 million increase over last year. About $4.6 million of that 6.8 is associated with property tax growth, primarily from development in the Folsom Plan area. So that property tax increase was anticipated. It's been factored into the general fund projections and all the presentations that we've given, so no surprise here, just right on track. And then other general fund revenues combined, for all of our sources, are accounting for the additional $2 million increase over the prior year. And then, as we go towards the right-hand side here, still on that top line for revenues, you'll see that projected use of the unassigned fund balance at $1.7 million. So when you add the two together, we have a total proposed budget for fiscal year 2425 of $117 million overall. And if we go across on the expenditure line, again, we start with that $108.6 million, and we're working towards the $117 million in resources. So we start with last year's appropriation, the 108, and we go through these columns here. So the first is that we had to add in about $5 million of cost increases for current operations. This is current contracts, increases in labor costs that were approved in the MOU agreements, you have current operating costs, regular annual salary step increases, and benefit cost increases. And so I'll go over all of these in more detail in the next slide, but that added $5 million to the budget just right off of the top and took us to $113.6 million of expenditures. With $113.6 million already spoken for, that left the city manager with about $1.7 million remaining to try to address the $39 million of department requests. We see that, that $1.7 million is split in those two columns, about 1.5 for additional positions and $216,000 for a couple of other items. And then you had that proposed use of the unassigned fund balance at $1.7 million for your total budget of 117. So first, we'll just go over that $5 million increase there on this next slide. So at the top, you had $4 million in salary and benefit increases, and that's a net increase, some, you know, changes in positions up and down, but this is what it will take to cover the current costs for our salary and benefit for current employees. This includes your MOU agreements, your regular salary and step increases, and increases in your benefit costs. And then down here, we have operations and maintenance increases. The first big one there is the repayment of the HVAC loan. We already paid for that, and the council approved five payments back to the Capital Improvement Fund, so that's in there for $280,000. And then we have some software contract increases. These are contracts that we are already in that are going to have COLA increases or whatever we have already entered into the contract with, so it's $186,000 or $187,000 citywide. Some requests from the fire and police departments to increase their training and education funds. They're consistently going over budget on those accounts, so this is just to match what they are spending in order to get that required training and education. Hazard tree work and structural pruning, $80,000 required there to continue at the level that's needed. And vehicle maintenance. We aren't replacing our vehicles at the rate that we probably should be, so vehicle maintenance costs have gone up by quite a bit, and this is a $75,000 true-up to try to just match what we are spending on that. The same thing for vet bills, it's higher than what we have budgeted, so we're doing a true-up there. And the rest of these are true-ups as well, and I'll just kind of go through. So the recreation guide, printing and postage costs, annual physical exams for the fire department, the park maintenance contract, that's one that the city manager mentioned. We couldn't get it a full true-up really at all. It was a $50,000 increase, and we needed another probably $600,000 to get to the current cost of what is happening right now for park maintenance. So as the city manager mentioned, we will see a decrease in service level there. Department supply increases, the next one there, that's primarily in fire and the fleet division in the Public Works Department. Fleet inventory management and household hazardous waste disposal contract increases. So again, we're already in those contracts, and that's what's going to cost. For the fire department, annual PPE inspection costs, needed an additional $30,000 to cover that, and then open space we debatement costs at $30,000. And then the last item there is all the other ones combined, because they didn't, you know, they weren't over $30,000 across all of the other general fund departments. So those are utility expenses, other printing costs, and things like that. So just back to this slide again, so we can go through here. We'll be moving on to what's proposed to be included as new additions in the budget. So we have the additional positions, and then we have the additional other items there. This, the first one is the $1.5 million, so these are the positions that our city manager already went over. The top four on the list are related to the Folsom Plan area versus that Park Planner II, at $141,000 for salary and benefits. The next is the park maintenance worker at a $100,000, and then two public works street maintenance workers for a total of $238,000. The next is the positions for the homeless outreach team. You have the police sergeant fully funded at $242,000, the corporal at $216,000, and then you have four police officers with the one funded at $183,000. And then you have your fire division chief to oversee training and other things there at $387,000. And just to explain a little bit more about the over-hire concept that we're proposing here is that the police department over the last five years, so from 2018 to 2023, has averaged $500,000 per year in salary savings from vacant positions. So the idea is that over the course of the year, you would have enough salary savings each year to be able to hire these three unbudgeted officers and still break even at the end of the year. You likely have vacancies in other positions at some point as you go through the year. This would be called an over-hire policy, and so we would be asking the council to officially approve that policy because right now we don't allow for hiring over the actual approved amount of positions. However, this does mean that in order for the vacancy savings to provide the necessary funding for these new positions, operations and maintenance costs must be held to their budgeted allocations, and that's kind of what we were looking at in the quarterly report, is that in total, they, they're not, they're not leaving the vacancy savings as available cash because they're overspending in other areas. So that would have to stop in order for the vacancy, the vacancy savings to work for this and to be able to cover these positions. The final proposed, oh, I already went over that, is the division chief. So those are the positions here, $1.5 million in ongoing costs. The remaining proposed additions to this budget, which you already saw, was $155,000 for software upgrades in the Community Development Department, and then adding $60,000 to the city clerk's budget for this year's election costs. And that is the full list of what has been proposed. Just one note, we are proposing one swap in funding. Last year, we proposed to do a $50,000 transfer into the IT capital fund so that we could start saving up for IT capital needs. It's anticipated that we really need about $200,000 a year in order to start funding a capital fund. The last year, we proposed $50,000, but then the city council decided to use it for economic development consultant instead. Well, that was a one-year item, so we're proposing this year, since that one-time money doesn't roll forward, to again, propose the $50,000 to transfer into an IT capital fund. So it's not a new item because you already kind of had that in the budget, just asking for it to go to this instead.
The election cost amount is unique to election years, or that's in addition to what we would normally budget in a non-election year?
Krista can answer that.
I can answer that, thank you. That's allocated only in election years, so the city clerk's department budget always kind of peaks and goes down in even-numbered years versus odd-numbered years. So you wouldn't have seen that allocation in last year's request, and you won't see it in next year's request.
How does that $60,000 compare to past election years? Is it going up also?
Well, it's, it's difficult to do a direct comparison because once we switch to by districts, the cost is allocated differently. But essentially, it's, it's in line if you compared the per-voter cost along with the base fee setup from the county. So we haven't seen a great increase in that cost when you look at it per voter.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, and then just back to this slide one more time. We're now at the far-right column.
We're now at the far-right column, the proposed use of the unassigned fund balance, and we do recognize that there is the need for the renovations and repairs in our parks and facilities, but with this very constrained budget and not a lot to go around, those renovations are not possible in this budget unless you were to cut something else, or you have to dig into the city's emergency reserve, and that's in the amount of about $1.7 million. So the proposed use here, which the City Manager did go over, but the amounts are $1.1 million for renovation of the Kids Play Park, about $480,000 to replace the kitchen equipment, tables and chairs in the community center, $80,000 to replace malfunctioning doors in the lighting control system at the Folsom Public Library, and $60,000 to replace the city's primary data storage system that has reached its end of life. This is a summary here of the results of this proposed budget. The Budget Committee received $38.7 million in requests for this budget year, including 71 new requested positions. And with the total revenue we expect to receive next year, we're able to propose a total of $3.5 million in additions, and that includes using $1.7 million of the unassigned fund balance. We were only able to propose eight funded positions, 11 in total, and that was out of those 71 requests. So this compares just what was requested to what could be fulfilled, and as the City Manager did mention, we do believe that this is very conservative, because it takes a lot of time and effort to prepare these requests from the department heads, and they really only ask for the essentials. And so we were just able to scratch the surface here, and even with using the unassigned fund balance in a non-recessionary time, this is what we were able to provide. So everything we've gone over so far is included in this slide. You have the proposed general fund appropriation of $117.1 million on that fourth column over there. So I'll go through each category here, so you can see where these are filling in here. Starting at the top line, salary and benefit expense will increase $5.5 million compared to fiscal year '24. This is an increase from a combination of a few elements that we've already discussed. Versus the addition of those eight budgeted positions, they're included in here, three in Police, one in Fire, two in Parks and Rec, and two in Public Works. And then you have your COLAs, your regular salary and benefit increases, for a total percent increase of 7%. The next line, your operations and maintenance budget, is proposed to increase by 1.7 million or 6%. This increase is related to cost increases listed on the earlier slide, where we tried to true-up some of those budget accounts. And then it includes the new non-staff proposals for technology upgrades in the Community Development Department, the election costs, and it is offset by some one-time items that were included last year that then don't roll forward. Capital outlay is up by about $1 million, mostly due to adding the Kids Play Park and the community center upgrades, again, offset by some one-time allocation, so it's a little lower than what will be proposed there. The debt service is increasing this year due to the first payment back to that HVAC loan, and this is also offset by a reduction in debt for a fire apparatus lease that was paid off in '23-'24. And then we have that new proposed item there at the bottom, the transfers out, that was $50,000 proposed to create an IT Capital Fund. This slide here displays the general fund proposed appropriations sorted by department, year-over-year.
So Meg, are you going to get to the revenue, the increase?
After.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. This slide here displays the general fund proposed appropriations sorted by department, so year after year, you have that $8.5 million increase that does include the $1.7 million increase because of the use of contingency funds. So the Fire Department is up $2 million over last year, and I'll just kind of go over again what's in there. The new Division Chief, the increases to salary and benefit and insurance increases, and then the costs that were trued up on that list that we already displayed. Police is up about $2 million as well. What you see here is the three budgeted positions, and then regular salary and benefit increases, insurance increases, and the true-ups. Community Development is up by $600,000. $155,000 is the proposed technology upgrades, and the rest is salary, benefit, and insurance costs. Public Works is up by $300,000, and that looks a little lower than the others, because they had a $400,000 one-time budget addition last year that gets removed, so if that was still in there, they'd be up by $700,000. But that's for the two new positions, and then the regular salary and benefit and insurance increases, and some other true-ups to operating accounts there. General Government, which is all of your administrative departments, including facilities, maintenance on this chart, is up for new budget additions for increased software contract costs and the replacement of the data storage system, it's up $60,000 for election costs, and then regular salary, benefit, and insurance cost increases here. Culture and Recreation includes both Parks and Recreation Department and the library on this chart. That's $2.5 million increase for, $1.1 million of that is the Kids Play Park renovation, about $498,000 is for the community center upgrades, $80,000 for library repairs, and then we're adding in the two new Parks positions, and then true-ups for operation and maintenance costs that were on that list, and salary and benefit increases here as well. As I already mentioned, for debt service, it's increasing this year for the first payment to the HVAC loan. This is offset by a reduction in the debt for a fire apparatus lease that was paid off in fiscal year '23-'24. And then your other line down here is your non-departmental costs, and just so you can get a feel of what's included in here, it's your $1.1 million contingency item that is required to be in the budget every year, that's 1%. You have $3.9 million for retiree health costs. You have the general fund share of the $500,000 transfer to the retiree health trust fund. You have your tax-sharing agreements. You have your FTB ID payment that comes from the TOT taxes. And then you have payment to the county for property tax administration and other items too, but those are the big ones there. And here you have the pie chart detailing this appropriation by department for fiscal year '24-'25. The City Council asked us to bring back a budget where the allocations looked very much the same as last year, and the percentages are exactly the same as the fiscal year ' '24 budget, except for the use of that unassigned fund balance, which went into Culture and Recreation for the addition of the Kids Play Park and the community center. So adding those brought Culture and Recreation up to 17%, and non-departmental is what dropped down from eight to seven. If you do take that out, if you take the use of the unassigned fund balance out, all of the departments are exactly the same as they were in the '23-'24 budget. So we do continue to propose a budget that maintains that balance of expenditures by function. Here you have your chart of authorized positions. As I mentioned, this proposed budget includes the addition of 11 authorized positions in the general fund, and we're also proposing two in the Environmental and Water Resources, that's two wastewater collection texts. These were anticipated in the rate study, and there is sufficient revenue for these positions. And then there's no proposed additional positions in solid waste this year for a total increase of 13 positions over the prior year. Now, moving on to take a look at the revenues. This slide has your '23-'24 budgeted revenue, and then the proposed figures for '24-'25. We're projecting total revenue, including those transfers in from other funds, to be at $115.3 million, so this doesn't include the proposed use of your unassigned fund balance. Property taxes are expected to continue on their current trend line and increase over the prior year by $4.6 million. Sales tax is estimated to be at $29.1 million. And this comes from our sales tax consultant. It's actually proposed to be flat with last year's budget, but it's bad news, is that the sales tax is projected for this year to come in under budget. So the '24-'25 budget is actually increased over what we think actual will be this year, but flat if you're looking at the two budget years together. Transit, whoops. Transit occupancy tax from our hotels is projected at $2.5 million for fiscal year ' '24-'25, so a little bit of growth over this year. Charges for services are proposed at just under $14 million. This increase comes from a projected increase in ambulance revenue in the Fire Department, and then a right-sizing of the revenue budget for Parks and Recreation program revenue. The department has outperformed the budgeted amounts there, and we have had some comments, maybe we're being a little too conservative in those areas, so we're bumping it up this year to bring it up to where they've been for the past two fiscal years, and that estimate should match, you know, where we have seen them. Licenses, permits, and vehicle license fees category is proposed at $14.4 million. It's a $1 million anticipated increase in your vehicle license fees, and then another right-sizeing of building permit revenue, kind of for the same reason that we're doing it, for Parks and Recreation. But it is important to note that in right sizing the revenues, there'll be little flexibility on the expenditure side for program costs to exceed budget. So often, when I'm here for a quarterly report, I'm able to say Parks and Recreation's over on their expenditures, but we have additional revenue to offset that. Well, this revenue right now is being allocated to the budget, and so if they are going over on their expenditure items, we won't have extra revenue to offset that.
But it does look to me that if I did the math, our revenue has gone up 6.2% this last year, from 108.5 to 115.3.
Sure, I don't have the percentage here, but that's neat, so. Okay, so the next chart here is the trend for our major tax revenues. Property taxes in the blue, moving up at a consistent pace, picking up a bit over the last three years, as more properties in the Folsom Plan area are now paying property tax. So that was expected, we've known about that trend. And then we have sales tax in gold, showing that slower trend in growth that I've been reporting for the last several years. As we move forward into fiscal year '25 and beyond, we expect that trend to continue. This chart here reflects the city's unassigned fund balance by year in the dark blue columns, and then you have your unassigned fund balance as a percentage of expenditures displayed by the red line. And we're really focused on the last four bars there on the right-hand side, where we're seeing fund balance, so the blue bars, staying relatively flat as far as cash value. But as a percentage of expenditures, which is the red line, it's decreasing every year. And when we look to the far-right bar, that's your fiscal year '24-'25 proposed budget, with the proposed use of 1.7 million of unassigned fund balance, we're projecting that by the end of that year, the unassigned fund balance will be at 22 million or down to 18.8% of expenditures. So with the path that we're on and the projected structural deficits in each of the next five years, adding to fund balance at the same rate of expenditure growth will be difficult. We'll likely see this red line continue to decrease and perhaps quickly fall below the council's minimum of 17%. And just an example of how this works, if anyone's listening and doesn't really know, if you have a reserve policy of keeping a minimum of 17% of expenditures in a reserve, and you have a $115 million budget, that means you have to have $19.5 million in your reserve to meet your minimum. If the budget grows to $130 million, you now need $22.1 million in reserves, just to have that same 17%. So cash is going up, but you're still just at 17%. So you have to add $2.5 million to your reserve to keep it at that minimum. So not only are you adding that to the reserve, but your expenses are also growing. It becomes difficult, as the city's struggling just to keep up with funding the operating expenses, for the city to also be able to maintain that minimum fund balance as a percentage each year. And if you use fund balance in any year and reduce this down, and it falls below the minimum, now you have to get back to your minimum, continue to add, and you're adding to your expenditure, so it just becomes even a larger issue and more difficult to achieve. So that was the end of the general fund for now. We're moving on to the enterprise fund budgets. We'll go over the projected revenues and proposed appropriations for water, wastewater, and solid waste funds, just briefly. The proposed budget for the Water Enterprise Fund includes $18.9 million of program revenue, which you're seeing in the right-hand column at the top, and then proposed appropriations for operating expenses at $17.5 million and $3.4 million of capital expenses. That leaves the fund with projected working capital of $21.1 million. The proposed budget for the Wastewater Enterprise Fund, right here, is $12.1 million of program revenues, proposed appropriations of $7.1 million for operations, and $2.2 million of capital expenses. That leaves the fund with projected working capital of $16.8 million. And then the proposed budget for the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund includes $26.3 million of program revenues, proposed appropriations are $20.7 million for operations and $2.2 for capital expenses, those are for vehicle replacements, and that will leave this fund with a working capital of $14.7 million. Next up is a look at your proposed capital improvement plan budget for fiscal year '24-'25. It is included in the document that you're receiving tonight, it's the second half of the book. There's a lot of detail in there, and I'm not going to go into that detail here. I just have one slide for you, just as an overview. And this lists in alphabetical order of some of the major projects. The fiscal year '24-'25 budget proposal is what's proposed to be spent this year, and then there's a total project budget, so they could have multiple years of spending that will then add up to that total project budget. Just to go over some of the highlights here, Benevento Family Park, Davies Park, Fire Station Number 33, that's to begin the design costs for the second fire station in the Plan Area, finishing up Fire Station Number 34, continuing with the trails in the Folsom Plan Area, and finishing up Prospector Park. You do see Kids Play Park in here, you see your stormwater, tank rehabilitation projects, and many water projects as well included in this list. Funding for these projects primarily come from impact fees, enterprise funds or grants, except for the Kids Play Park, which is proposed to be funded from the general fund's unassigned fund balance. And so that's just a brief summary on the CIP. Here you have your appropriations by fund in total for all the city funds, that includes the general fund, the CIP that we just went over, and all of your other fund types. The proposed budget includes the $117 million for the general fund, $54 million for enterprise funds, $11.9 million for your special revenue funds, $11.7 for your debt service funds, $7 million for capital projects funds, $23.9 for your internal service funds, and $21 million for your fiduciary funds, for total appropriations of $247 million. The final section of this budget presentation is our five-year budget forecast. We've broken this down into four major budgetary concerns that the city is facing as we move forward into the next five years. The first is the five-year forecast. This chart has the general fund's actual and projected total revenues in blue, and then your actual and projected expenditures in red. So the left half of the chart, before fiscal year '24, is actuals, and then to the right of fiscal year '24 is the projections. And you'll see that in the left half of the chart, the blue line is above the red line, meaning that from fiscal year '20-'21 until now, revenues have exceeded expenditures, and they gave us a little bit of a surplus. We were able to replenish the fund balance that was used during COVID. But what we're projecting now, that this year and beyond, the lines will flip, and expenditures, that's your red line, will exceed revenues, creating a structural deficit. This projection is expenditures without a cut in services. So this is what it will cost the city to continue to provide all the services that we're funding in the budget right now, plus any additional services needed for South of 50, which are factored into this projection. This projection goes out to fiscal year '30, and by that point, we're projecting a $5.25 million annual funding gap. The revenue projections here do include the increased property tax, which will fund the required increase in services to serve the Folsom Plan area, and even with that growth, we're still left with this gap. It's a $16.5 million shortfall when you add up all of those years together over the next five years, if no cuts are made. So what would that mean for fund balance? If no cuts are made, and there's no new revenue source coming into the city, this is the projected effect on your unassigned fund balance, as you use your unassigned fund balance to cover the annual shortfalls. The blue bar on the left shows your current level of fund balance as proposed in the budget. It would be at 18.8% as a percentage of expenditures by the end of fiscal year '24, and then based on projected revenue and expenditure growth, the balance starts to drop down to 17.3%, 14.4%, 11.3%, 7.7, down to 3.8% or 5.5 million by fiscal year '29-'30. Alternatively, if the council were to decide to use additional fund balance for this current budget, bring it down to the minimum 17%, that'd be displayed in the red bars, and if you then had to use fund balance to cover annual shortfalls, and years after that, your fund balance would drop below the minimum in the very next year, down to 15.6%, then go to 12.7%, 9.7%, 6.2%, and down to 2.3% or just over $3 million by fiscal year '29-'30. This does not take into account using the fund balance to add any new additional recurring expenses that could be added, that would deplete the fund balance even faster, and it does not project a recession, which would also have an additional negative impact.
Can I ask you a question about last year's prediction? Were we predicted to be about $1 million in projected structural deficit by this year? And then earlier this year, you put it down to 500, but what I'm seeing is that we're not in a structural deficit this year.
Well, a structural deficit means that if you continue to do everything that you're doing, you don't have enough money to do it. So items such as not being able to replace all the cars in the Police Department.
Did we predict last year, was it presented that we were going to be?
I think 1.1, I think, was the projection that we had when we had put the chart out a year, year and a half ago.
That we would be in a structural deficit this year?
Yeah, which we are, because we have things that we cannot fund, such as the park maintenance. So structural deficit doesn't mean that you're spending more than you have. A structural deficit means that you have expenditures that you would like to be providing services.
But we have the revenue to cover expenses, it's how we're spending, how we're expending our money is really. What I'm seeing is it's 100, well, to use correct numbers, 115 million, .33, whatever, 115 million. So another $6.8 million from last year. And then we're choosing in our budgets, and we chose throughout the year, to expend, I believe it was another $4 or $5 million, which doesn't reach that increase in revenue. So I don't see the structural deficit, as long as our expenses don't go up. Outside of the, I understand the $4 million budget increases with COLA and all of that stuff. It's how we're choosing to expend the excess revenue that would put us in a structural deficit.
It's always a choice, yeah.
Right.
What you're going to spend on, what programs you're going to decrease, and I don't know if Elaine wants to add to that, but if you were to fully fund the parks' maintenance contract... if you were to fully fund the parks' maintenance contract, we didn't have the revenue to do that.
But that was 600,000, I think, or 500,000, whichever you just said. I'm sorry, there's a lot of numbers flying out. By the way, we don't get these PowerPoints before, so I'm trying to capture all of them, so I appreciate it.
It was about $600,000. And another example that the city manager gave was that the police department needed close to $1 million for vehicle replacements to keep on schedule. And this budget proposes the 500,000 that they've had year over year. So that is the definition of a structural deficit. You don't have enough to cover the costs, so you're deferring it. You're delaying it, or you're not doing something. Okay. Okay. So number three on this list of budget concerns is that the flattening sales tax trend that we're experiencing is continuing. The first time I showed this slide was when we were preparing for the fiscal year 2021 budget. We were already predicting this flattening back then, and unfortunately, this has continued. This source of revenue is about 25% of our general fund. It's had a big impact on our ability to provide services when sales tax revenue growth doesn't keep up with the increase in cost of providing those services. In recent years, sales tax revenue has been averaging just 2% per year, and that's expected to continue into the future. And then the final major concern we wanted to discuss this evening is that there continues to be millions of dollars, and we've shown this slide before, and these are not updated numbers. We know that they're likely higher than this now. But when the executive management team did this exercise, there was at least $20 million of unfunded or underfunded needs that we've been deferring year after year, and we're adding to that list again this year. The total proposals, which we've mentioned, were $39 million. We're proposing just under $3.5 million, and we're having to use the reserve in order to do that. These needs don't go away. They're just deferred, and they continue to accumulate, and the cost to pay for them continues to grow. So in summary here, we have some boxes that we would always like to be able to check when we deliver a proposed budget, but this year, we were only able to check off two of them. First, in the left-hand corner, we do feel that this is a structurally sound and balanced budget proposal, and it responds appropriately to the city's economic reality. So that box is checked. Second, the council directed to maintain that historical balance of expenditures by department. That's your pie chart. And this budget does do that, so we can check that box as well. But third, we would like to be able to propose a financially responsible budget that doesn't use the city's unassigned fund balance. However, this budget does propose to use a portion of your unassigned fund balance, but it is for one-time expenditures, not ongoing costs. And in doing that, it still leaves the reserve within your 17% to 20% range policy. So we do feel it's an acceptable use of those funds. And then lastly, this budget still leaves millions of dollars in infrastructure, equipment repair and replacements, and staffing needs and other important items unfunded. As far as next steps, this was your presentation of the proposed budget, and your first chance to adopt the budget will be at your next meeting, June 11th, at the first public hearing. As a reminder, the budget must be adopted by the last working day of the fiscal year, June 30. And if the city council does not adopt the budget by June 30, then the budget as proposed by the city manager will be deemed adopted. And with that, I will turn it back over to you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy.
Thank you very much. A lot of work went into that. Thanks to everybody who pitched in on it and educating us on some arcane topics as the year went on so that we could understand it well. I think it would be worthwhile to get public comment, if we have any, and then see what commentary the council has, and then we'll put this on the agenda for our meeting in June.
Okay, you do have one request to speak on this item. That is from Judy Alexander.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Not having heard the budget prior to putting in my request to speak, I wasn't quite sure what I was gonna say. But I think there is a sense in the community that in the past, prior to any of you being on council, there might have been a lack of planning or expectations which allowed some of the things that we're stressing out about at the moment to come to fruition. Maybe not, but I just get a sense that's what people are thinking. And so I think they're hoping that we can predict perhaps better for the future. I don't know, but I know everybody's happy to be living here, and we want success. And I think Elaine and Stacy did just a great job. The other thing I think is that we want to get a sense of, of looking to the future. We may have another recession on our hands. We don't know. But this is quite possible, so let's not promise what we can't deliver. And I think that you all are quite capable of doing that. The other thing I wanted to mention is I'm not sure what other cities, like-sized cities, are dealing with right now in this current economy. Are we all in the same boat? Is everybody stressed out? Do we all think we have what we need and we don't? So if there's any way of perhaps enlightening the general public on the fact that this is a common situation, or just something to broaden our understanding, perhaps, that would build our confidence. Thank you.
Very good. Judy, may I ask you a question?
Sure.
Do you think the budget as presented helps to dispel that feeling of unsureness? Or indicate that we have a plan?
If anybody heard the depth of work that has gone into this, I think they would feel confident that we're dealing rationally with the situations. But I think people are uncomfortable about the situation we find ourselves in. I don't know if it's happening all over the place, if we have some things to shore up. I don't know.
Gotcha. Okay, very good. Thank you. I will, if everybody will indulge me, address the issue of other cities and what they're doing. I would say that cities that lack a special revenue source are in pretty much the same boat that we are in, where rising costs have got the better of their budget. Cities locally who have passed special revenue measures are in a different boat, and cities that were formed much more recently than ours also are in a different boat. So just if you take the example of Rancho Cordova, very well-run city, a neighbor of ours, but they are not only benefiting from having two special sales tax revenues to help their coffers, but they have been constructed as a city that outsources virtually every service that's provided to the residents there. So trash is a contract, police is a contract with the sheriff's department, fire is a contract with SAC Metro Fire. So the vast bulk of their budget are fixed in those kind of contract negotiations, not in negotiations with actual staff. And because Rancho Cordova was only formed in the year 2000-ish-
20 years ago.
Yeah, 2004. They don't have the same kind of legacy costs of full-service city like Folsom does. So that gives you some sense of, you know, why they have kind of what seems like very high level of flexibility in their spending relative to the constraints that we're dealing with. And I think you can find cities across a wide spectrum that are somewhere between those two poles. I think that's typical.
Mayor Kowalski, you explained that very well, because that is exactly what is happening.
Yeah, we've talked about it a number of times, but succinctly, that's what's going on. Very good. All right, to the council, any questions for the staff, guidance going forward? And we'll hear this again as an opportunity to vote on it on June 8. Is that right?
June 11.
June 11th?
June 11.
So YK, any thoughts you'd like to share right now with the staff on the budget presentation? General feelings? And great job, and see on the 11th as an okay comment?
No, no, that's very true. You know, again, some of you may know or not, I was a state employee before I got into the city council. I know how much work it takes, whether we all, five of us are agreeing or not, for this budget, ups and downs, irrespective. Elaine, thank you. Tracy, Stacy, and Adam, and everyone of the leadership, thank you. It's usually a nightmare for staff and especially the executive management team, because there is so much going on. We have heard last couple of months, a roomful of people here, they have to justify every nature. Now, I sincerely want to thank, we can definitely talk, you know, what changes we can make. Those are our views, but as is, thank you again. I'll quickly go through. Mayor, how do you want to, I know I wrote down a couple of them. I don't want to take up all the time. How do we want to work?
If you've got recommendations, suggestions, or questions, now's your chance.
Now my chance. I know we were talking about the police. My colleague Anna was talking on the three officers. Stacy, I think you answered that very well. It's not just that one salary savings, that department, right? So, but having said that, last five years, they were savings, but they were spending, right? So I'm sure that is a very appropriate due diligence spending. If we move all those fundings to officers, which we want certainly, what's the state of those spending? I'm just curious. You may not be the right person, but I still want to ask that question.
Yeah, I wouldn't know how that would impact.
Yeah.
We'd have to defer to Chief on that, and we'll also have to just kind of see as we go a bit. You know, the point is that they have a certain budget allocation in areas, and they're not using it all. And we're kind of knitting all those together to come up with positions. So, you know, Chief will just have to be diligently staying within his budgeted amounts in the other categories, which I know he can do.
Yeah. Thank you, Elaine. So play by the ear. I think that's what it is, right? You know, just closely. I was watching one more quickly on, ah, come on.
While you're looking, Councilmember Tullman-Trell, I did just want to make the comment that we did work pretty hard in this budget to do what Stacy referred to as true-ups. Like, as much as we could, we went through each department, including the police department, and tried to catch up their line items to what they're actually spending, kind of look it in the eyes. So that helps.
Yeah. I was looking at quarter two numbers of this year. I think recently you presented to us. And more or less, you know, quite a few departments are overspending than projected in last May. So that is a trend going on. That's what I think I was looking at the Q2 numbers. If there is already a demand, how the coming up growth is going to sustain? We are already overspending right now. Are we going to put some controls on the department for the budget we are approving in May-June? Any overspending is going to be brought to all of our, I'm just, you know, if you can help me, yes, one C's, two C's comes, but not that kind of $5 million comes to city council members. Can you share any thoughts on that? How do we control that?
Well, that would be up to the city council to decide how you wanted to control that. One kind of outlier that we've talked about a lot is the Community Development Department, because they specifically bring in permit revenue, and then they hire the consultant to go ahead and handle that. So if you wanted to have a different policy perhaps for that operation, and then something else for the other departments, we'll do what you tell us to do.
Thank you. Again, Mayor, probably we may have to, you know, talk a little bit more detail on that. I certainly have seen community service department line also, but I'm talking all departments, right? And one example is, right now, we were all talking, Chief Hillman has to, you know, pay more attention and go through how he's spending that extra savings of salaries and other things as well. That may be true for, you know, all departments. That's one thing I want to emphasize on that. I hear what community development department is. The other one I have, come on, YK, you have to write it nicely, right? If you don't mind, can we go back to the 42nd slide? That's the last in first. 42. Yes. I know, I was reaching out to you for the reasons and all those. I hear the behavior is changing. There is a lot of money there, especially on the sales tax, where it is flattening. We, even before we look for other revenues, there is a revenue, City of Folsom is losing right now. Because I took a quick note when Elaine Anderson was, you know, mentioning, you know, she has seen the previous city managers enjoyed, you know, I know, I'm not going to use the word enjoyed, 6% sales tax growth. But right now, we are on 2% flatten. Maybe COVID has done a little bit more damage for that online shopping. I truly believe, even though anybody says services and commodities and all those, the fair share from county, we are not receiving for our sales tax. I want to really emphasize on that one. Maybe five of us, as a council members, if we have to go to and picket in front of the county, give us our money.
Maybe there's a county supervisor that we know.
I know, I know, I know. I'm going to, you know, call the positive thing. It's unfair, you know, the previous slide, we were talking 5.2 millions. We have our money, but we are not getting, based on the equation county is defining, whatever it is. I think this council, you know, I'm more than happy to be there and the first guy picketing, Folsom needs our fair share for our sales tax. It's important. So there is a huge money ours is not being received by our city of Folsom. I just want to emphasize on that one. How, Mayor, we can maybe 11th or 12th, before we move it, we can talk about it.
Very good. That one sounds like a lobbying at the state capitol kind of project over many years with lots of help.
Yes. I'll buy a nice lunch for our future supervisor in Sutter Street Stockoree. How about that? You know, I got to do some, you know, helping, so that we can get those ones. I have, maybe the other one is the deficit, if you don't mind. One more car. Not this one, maybe. Yes. I truly believe, I truly believe, that trend shouldn't be like that. The blue should go up. As I am looking at some of the numbers, I'm just going to put some thoughts here, see how our colleagues are going to play with these ideas. I'm looking at last year's numbers. Can we bring to city manager in such a way some revenue generation targets for our department heads? So what it means, right now, I'm going to take this, Kelly, if you are here, apologies. I'm just taking that example. Aquatic Center revenue right now projected $950,000, 950, a little bit shy of 1 million. Our expenditure is 1.75 millions. 750 to 800,000, we are overspending. I agree, we are in service mode. Can we put some targets? I was looking at even our mission statement as well, innovation. Folsom wants to be the leader. Can we define those innovation strategies? How do we get that extra dollar as a revenue to our aquatic center? I'm going to say, I think I might have said this before, I'm going to say it. If you see the recreation and parks booklet has came, there is a movie night at Aquatic Center. It's going to be packed. My goal is attract the corporations to use our aquatic center in those off-time as their company's recreation facility and draw some revenue. I'm just giving one example. Likewise, you know, just now, we talked about our Folsom Zoo. It's $900,000 revenue, but we are spending 2.2 millions. Before I say anything, personally, me as a council member, I'm going to fight to death to keep the zoo in our town. Let me say that first before anything. We want the zoo in our town because that's our pride. But we still have 1.3 million. And I was talking to a few people, and again, the same concept goes. Use the innovation, creativity, see whether we can bring some corporate sponsors, especially during the holiday light season. You can- You can bring at least $50,000 per night, believe me. If you can touch those new innovative companies coming, Qualcomm, Samsung, they have a deep pockets. So I just want to emphasize, number one, fight at the county office, picketing, whatever it is, give our $7 million, $6 million money. We are spending already. And number two, be innovative and creative, bringing extra dollar through our programs. That's my emphasize. My last one is going to be, because that curve shouldn't be like that if we all do what we supposed to do. My third one is going to be, I know we talked about expenditures, spending especially. We are still not there for those contracts and purchases to follow the best practices. We are still not there. We are trying, but we are not there yet. If I can take, you know, sincerely, you know, if I can request sincerely to city manager and all our department heads, if you can expand the pool of people who are going to help us, the vendors, that helps us bringing the competition. But we are still not there. That's where I am talking. It's going to be the future. So if we can do all three, that should be upside down, I guarantee. But we have to do that, you know, sincerely, diligently, and this council has to help as well on their process. So I'm going to pause here because I'm sure, you know, Mayor is going to give us some more time while we are debating. This is our first time.
Can I just?
It's actually, the intention tonight was a presentation. So questions are appropriate and the actual discussion should be held for further discussion.
Can we, can this council can take into the revenue generation targets approach for the revenue gen? That's a discussion.
So beyond what we already have established as fee recovery models for all of those activities in departments? Because we've reviewed over those within the last like two years and we're in the middle of doing a fee recovery study right now for planning and planning in parks and other things.
Like for example, in Parks and Rec, you know, we have cost recovery targets for each of the operations within that department and we are either meeting or exceeding those targets, like the aquatic center, we are with, we are meeting our cost recovery target and we just raise fees at the gate.
I was getting to a clarifying question. Is it modifying those targets or endeavor to find new revenue sources?
Find new revenue sources. Here is my point.
A fair challenge.
I'm so glad you brought that raise at the gate fee. That shouldn't be the first option. That must be the last option, raising the fee at the gate. But in the examples I was giving, Mayor, attract the corporate world and try it sincerely. We don't know. I mean, everybody does their, they do at the, what is that, the restaurant on the Sacramento River, Delta King nearby. They have the opportunities. It's not just talking restaurant, that environment, they're looking for something different.
That new kitchen's going to help.
Creative, absolutely. So again, there is huge money. I know people say it is pennies. No, it is not pennies. If you sincerely try 10 of those, each one brings $50,000, it's a half a million dollars. That's the context I am going to give. So that's my number one.
Okay.
Revenue generation and see how we can handle, fight for our fair tax, sales tax revenue coming home.
Representative sales tax sharing.
And in addition to, in addition to how we can educate our community, I posted on social media, one of those, how do we educate? Even if we can convince 10% of the people buy local, right now, our revenue from sales tax is $27 million. 10% more is $29.7 million. It's quite a bit. I'm not asking the 90% to change your behavior. I'm asking only the 10% people, but we got to try sincerely. I know somebody said Chamber has been doing this shop local drive. But are we telling the residents, if you buy local here, I mean sincerely, Mayor, sincerely and repeatedly, if you buy local, the park next door will have a better shape. The trail you are walking will have a more cleaner, more, are we connecting the people who are buying to the local services? I haven't seen repeatedly that kind of message. Yes, I have seen several times on the Folsom Lake College, big present, the big screen, shop local, shop local. I got that point, but are we connecting the people to change their mind, that 10% so that we can get another 2.7 millions from the people and get some money from the county? So I'm making three points here.
Okay.
One is revenue generation targets innovative. Number two, improve our spending procurement processes. And number three is get our sales tax dollars to our town.
All right, very good. Thank you. Anna, what do you got?
Well, I basically said some of it, but I would like this council to consider at the next meeting. You know, it was said earlier, we're just going to go in these areas and I'm not just comfortable, we're just going to go and see what happens, I think is what the city manager says as far as next year with the police department and the hot team and we're just going to see how it goes. Well, I think that's what we've seen is this is how it's going. We know how it's going. It's not going well. 47% increase in crime was presented to us, I think it was a month ago. And we continue to get emails, we continue to get concerns from the public. We've had outreach, we've had them come and speak here heartfelt. It is not just one person, it's not just one business, it is many areas of the city and many community members all over. So I'm not comfortable with just going with it.
I just, I just.
So let me finish, please.
I want to clarify something.
So if they are having to pull from salary savings, salary savings for other necessary items to meet their budget or to meet the needs that they have, so they're already pulling from the salary savings? Even the true-up, which I see presented in this budget, which you just explained what a true-up was, is at $90,000, so we're truing up that. If, but if they're having to pull so much money, then how are we going to pay for those other necessary items? I don't believe the police department or any other departments are really wasting money. So they're down one to two positions right now. So let's say best case scenario, they fill that, those two positions in the next two months, then what do we do? So we can hire three more people, but we can't fully fund a hot team. And we got presented with an option on how to counteract the increase in crime that we're having, the transient population, and how to actually meet the needs of some of our homeless community. And three positions isn't cutting it. Now we're adding code enforcement to them. I'm not saying we're taking away the one position in the other department, but I'm saying now we're adding more responsibilities with code enforcement. So we're adding three positions and if they're fully funded, but they now are going to be responsible for code enforcement for homeless. So it's, we're robbing Peter to pay Paul again. This is, you know, we shouldn't, this should be the one thing that we're focused on, that we are not going to go and see what happens. We know what happened this year. So, you know, I'm not going to be comfortable with a budget that doesn't fully fund six new officers. I mean, we have an entire B South of 50 that is not being regularly patrolled. It's not like it's just the homeless outreach teams, they need bodies. So this is a no, this is a, this is a non-negotiable for me. We have a million dollars contingency funds. Right now, we have $367,000 still in our contingency fund. So I would propose maybe the council consider that we fund those other three officers through the contingency fund next year. And the contingency fund is the same thing as a unassigned fund balance. We're just assigning it to contingency, we're just using another name. So we have the emergency room reserves, which in the thing said that we are 17, between our financial policy of 17 to 20%, even with the allocation, if we approve the draft budget as it's approved. So I would say let's look there. And then the other thing, and then we can talk about that all in two weeks after we look at more of the budget. But the only other thing is the travel training budget, I don't see what that item is in here, but I would request that we add more to the travel budget. I asked to go to several different organization, things that I've been to in the past at other councils that were incredibly helpful. I think that we should value our council's experience and leadership training and the ability to work with big corporations, federal corporations and state to get grants and we're not doing that, we're losing those opportunities, I believe, from what I've experienced in the past. So with two new council members coming to this, we're going to have new training for them. I would say that we can find 25,000 in the budget to add to our council travel and training budget. And that, we could allocate it with 5,000 each or however we want to, in addition to what we already have. What we already have is not enough. So I think if a council member wants to go and spend their own time traveling, it's exhausting and going and learning and, I mean, you know, I came back from ICSC and was able to instantly work with the people I was here and go in and suggest some things that could fundamentally help the city. I think to YK's point about getting innovative in revenue, yeah, I don't see that in this, but I don't know if that's part of the budget as much as it's part of maybe the intent. And, you know, Ted Corp presented in January of five options, very low hanging fruit options that we could get very creative and, not even creative, we could direct the city manager to go after. That would bring 1.4 million dollars in a year, things that will already be happening. So there are other ways to bring in revenue and I kind of think that, YK, that just builds on your point. So those are the things I would like to discuss on June 11th.
Very good, thank you. Rosario?
Well, I look forward to delving into this over the next couple of weeks. But I just want to say that I was glad to see that there is a public, that the fire department will have a training. One of the concerns that I've had is that, you know, in public safety, whether the fire department or police department, we do have a lot of younger, a little more inexperienced individuals and so I think that's going to give a great value to the fire department. I have the same concern about the police department, but considering some of the other positions that will be filled, you know, that will eventually come up. As far as like the hot team goes, I think that is great. We have had, you know, a team that has been focused on homelessness in the past three and a half years that I've been on the council. It was crime suppression unit and then it went to the pop team and now it'll be the hot team. So I think we should pick one and stick to it instead of confusing the public because the public doesn't, tells me, we don't have a hot team. And I tell them, well, we don't have a hot team, but we've had a pop team and we've had a crime suppression unit and I personally have worked with these individuals. So, you know, there has been a focus on homelessness in Folsom. I am comfortable using the salary savings to justify those other three positions to make it six positions and that is because here's the reality. Whether it's Sacramento Sheriff's Department, Sacramento Police Department, Citrus Heights Police Department, Folsom is no exception to the fact that it is very difficult to hire into these positions. There are shortages in almost every department, probably I'm going to guess across California. So I think that eventually it'll have its, it'll offset and play itself, sort of play itself off. Every department in the state of California is vying for that experienced lateral positions that are not moving for benefit reasons, benefit packages. And so what it does is it leaves these law enforcement agencies having to hire less experienced or no experienced into their department. So I think that was a very creative approach to getting more positions to be able to fill some of these vacancies in the police department. What was my other comments? I also had concerns about, well, if we fill those, what will be the impact, if we, what is it, overspending costs? And what would be the impact if we no longer have this little extra? But I'm sure it'll eventually, I guess, work itself out and Chief will do a great job of staying within his budget. But overall, I look forward to delving in the next couple of weeks.
Very good, thank you.
Could I just clarify one point before we move on? I just want to say that if my remark was interpreted as we'll see how it goes with the three extra positions, that is not what I intended to communicate. We are adding six positions to the police department, period, for a hot team. What I meant by we'll see how it goes is yes, we're going to have to be sure that we work within our budget in the police department and the question was asked, what will that look like? And I couldn't immediately say, well, it'll be 10,000 here and 5,000 here. I was saying legitimately, you know, honestly, we're going to see how it goes, but I wasn't trying, I have no plans to say there are actually only three positions. There are six positions in this budget.
Very good. Madam Vice Mayor?
Well, first of all.
Took a lot of notes, a little worried.
I think there's a lot to like in this budget and so many thanks to Elaine and Stacy and Adam and the entire finance team and to Allison. And I know that this was especially difficult because of the loss of Terry. So thank you for all your work. I have several questions for Parks and Rec, so I'm wondering if I could have Kelly come to the podium, please.
Come on down, Kelly Gonzalez.
So it has been mentioned that we cannot fully fund park maintenance and I'm wondering, last year, we made some changes, right, where we're not mowing or edging or pruning as often. Are we making additional cuts, cuts in addition to that or that will be the status quo?
Now, so we made cuts as of January of this fiscal year and we plan to make additional cuts in July. So we held off on the RFP, we didn't have the funding. So we made substantial cuts for this fiscal year and then starting in July, we're going to be doing a new RFP. Based on the last, the numbers that came in, we're anticipating another reduction in order to get the amount of reduction in savings.
That's to the scope of work.
Correct.
Right.
Thank you.
Related to the scope of work, plus we have additional acreage that will be coming online.
Got it, okay.
So we're anticipating 50% of cuts to get a 30% savings. We did have some additional ARPA money that helped close the gap this fiscal year.
Okay. And it, first of all, Second Park Planner, I think is fabulous. You talked about a park maintenance worker primarily for the Folsom Plan area, which for those who don't know is everything south of 50. But we're, this fall, we'll have our first park there and we're going to only have one park for a few years before other. So it doesn't seem like we need a park maintenance person primarily for the Folsom Plan area. What am I missing?
We also have open space, we have trails, so there's additional maintenance that is required in addition to the Prospector Park.
Okay, but that person could also be pulled to do things north of 50.
Yeah, our acreage has close to double in the last couple of years.
Okay.
We do have renovation needs on this side of the freeway as well and those, both of those positions could help us catch up on North 50 as well.
And you're talking about using one-time unassigned fund balance to purchase new equipment for the community center. Is the condition of our equipment, is that impacting our ability to rent the facility? Are people saying, I'm not going to rent this because of the condition of the chairs and the tables and the kitchen equipment?
It makes it, well, one thing that we are exploring is increasing those rates, but we're having a hard time validating that based on the condition of the facility and the equipment. We do have concerns because equipment's not turning on anymore. Are we still renting it? Yes. Could we, could we increase our capacity? Yes, as well. The other concern too is related to the staff. The equipment is heavy, old and outdated, so we're concerned with the staff that are doing the setup and tear down.
Okay. And just, there was something in there, I think in the capital improvement projects, 1 million for Davies Park. What does that include?
I'd have to go back and look at that, but that includes the, an additional park that's coming online. So related to our CIP.
Davies Park, isn't that over by American River Canyon?
I have to take a look at that.
Okay, okay. And then, just because I'm sure the public is going to pick up on this, there's 7.5 million in there for Benevento Park and it would certainly be easy to say, well, let's not build Benevento Park at this time and take that 7.5 million and spend it on existing parks. I don't believe we can do that because that money was collected specifically by the residents in that area to provide a park, correct? So we don't have flexibility there.
Right.
Okay. Okay, that's helpful, thank you.
Okay.
So Stacy, I guess one of my questions for you is when you talk about using this one-time unassigned fund balance to fund some of these things, including kids play park, which we all want to see renovated. Just for a little bit of history for the public, so the city used to have a policy where we maintain a reserve equal to 15% of our general fund expenditures. In practice, it usually was above 20%. This council changed that last year to be a range of. This council changed that last year to be a range of minimum of 17%, but maximum of 20%. So, we're not just squirreling away money, we are reinvesting it in our community. So, when you talk about you're using the unassigned fund balance, but really, you're taking money in excess of the 20%, correct?
Partially over, but you'll get down to 18.8%, so you won't be sitting at 20%. It's not all excess. Because you'll be dipping down further into the range.
A little bit more than half of the 1.7 is below the 20%.
Right, I understand that, but, I mean, I guess when I say a range, that's what it should be, a range, you know? It doesn't, I'm okay being on the low end of the range these days, because there are significant needs, so.
Yeah.
I mean, if, so whatever the end of the, whatever's above 20% this year, at the end of this fiscal year, you could bring that to us, and then, an à la carte list that says, you know, here's, you've got 1.5 million or whatever above your 20%, and you can use it to fund these certain things, right?
Correct.
Okay. And then, I guess I have a question for Chief Hillman, it doesn't necessarily need to be answered tonight, but I guess my question is, with the six officers, and assuming we are fully staffed with the 81 that we currently have, does that not only staff a hot team, but does it also ensure that every beat, including Beat Five, is staffed on every shift?
Chief, are you prepared to answer that this evening?
Thank you.
And then, I guess, while he's coming down, kind of just food for thought, I mean, certainly, we all know we need more officers, and I'm happy to see that, but I also wonder, you know, that's kind of the enforcement piece of it, when we're talking about homeless, obviously, there's a service piece of that, and there isn't anything in here in terms of, you know, our own navigator, or something that we've had in the past. So, just kind of wondering your thoughts on that.
Okay, so, the first question regarding staffing south of Highway 50, no. We operate with a deficit, because even if we have 81 officers, for instance, we have just a couple vacancies now, however, we have, I think there's 10 people right now that are on light duty, where they aren't at work, or they can only work in the office. So, we aren't there yet to staff full. If ideally, if everybody was at work, then I believe we could have enough patrols to include all five areas of our city taken care of.
And do we have a timeline on those people who are on light duty, when they're expected to return to full duty, or?
No.
Okay.
Some of them, I, the update I got today, the soonest for one person would be in about a month. The rest of the people, it's just, it's up in the air.
Okay. Okay, and then, in terms of, so, obviously, we don't have the navigator through Sacramento Steps Forward, or Sacramento Self-Help House, you know, whichever organization it was. And obviously, we have great nonprofits, for example, Jake's Journey Home, but is there something that we could be doing? The increased enforcement is important, but I also think it's important to be able to tell the residents of Folsom, "Hey, we have somebody who is our go-to person, who's helping connect people to services, please don't give individuals money, please give it to these organizations," or whatever. Is there, is there a desire on your part to have our own navigator? Is there something that we're not able to offer, because we don't have that position anymore?
Yeah, we've been able to offer with Jean's assistance from Jake's Journey Home. She has helped us quite a bit. But, the POP team will be in addition to the HOT team, so a lot of different names have been thrown out. The HOT team would be dedicated to homeless services, not strictly enforcement. And so, we would look to that team to bring us ideas of what they want to do. So, we currently have some money in the budget right now for a navigator. That team might develop and say, "Hey, best practices in the region are to do a navigator," or "best practices are to outsource to a nonprofit," or "work with a local hospital that also has services." So, we're looking to form alliances in many different ways, with different businesses and such, and I really want that team to develop that, and not put some eggs in this basket, some eggs in this basket, and some eggs over here, to put it all together in one.
Okay, thank you. I'm fully supportive of the HOT team, I'm fully supportive of the additional six officers. My only, I guess, challenge here is that, you know, obviously, I represent District 3, which includes Beat Five, and it's their increased property tax revenue that is paying for those officers. And so, I don't know how, but we really do need to find a way to ensure that Beat Five is staffed every single shift. So, I understand the challenges you're dealing with in terms of vacancies and people out, but it doesn't seem right that the people who are, you know, allowing for these additional officers are not directly benefiting from them, so.
I agree, and while we do stay within our budget, we have allocated a lot of money to overtime, to get those areas covered when they aren't routinely covered. We have many other things that are with overtime, that are being expended, where we have yet to see the money come back to us. Some of that is just because of the war in Ukraine, and now, we are providing security for our Muslim community of Folsom, and for the Jewish Community Center. So, we provide security three days a week-
Wow.
...at an expense to us. We'll eventually see money coming back from the state, but that money ends on the 30th of this month, so then, what do we do? We also have some other expenses, and it's mostly just overtime expenses. We're trying to stay within our budget, and we usually always do stay within that budget.
Thank you, Chief, that's helpful.
Vice Mayor, I have one following question. Chief, is this council locking you to give six to HOT team, or we can give six officers, then you use appropriately? I agree 100% with, you know, Vice Mayor of not putting the officers on beat, which is very, very important. I'm not saying homelessness is not, but six members. So, are this council locking you, or we can open up that to your discretion?
I don't think there's ever a lock from the council, because I can approach the city manager and say, "Hey, this HOT team has solved homelessness in Folsom, and we would like to reallocate those resources elsewhere." So, while I don't see that happening, I've also talked to my colleagues about what's the proper number to have a team that's effective, seven days a week, that can help with this problem that we're having.
Thank you. That was my understanding, but I want to still ask a question, because everyone is listening, you know, how people are going to be, right? How about my beat, like, as rightfully Vice Mayor was asking? I get the same questions too all the time.
Our whole, our first and foremost responsibility is providing patrol coverage to every area of the city, and we do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good question, YK, thank you. Just a couple more questions, Mr. Mayor. I'm done with you, Chief, thank you. So, Stacy, this slide that's up here, you know, if you think of the city and our finances as, you know, this big ship that's moving, right, and we've got this structural deficit, this kind of iceberg out there, and we turn very slowly. What do steps do we have to take today to start reversing this? I mean, I know the steps that the past councils have taken with making employees pay more of their pension, and, you know, eliminating retiree health benefits, and all this kind of stuff, but how do we start to turn this big ship to reverse that trend? Obviously, if salary and benefits are 72% of the budget, I mean, that's, controlling expenses is something that we have more control over than increasing revenue, right? So, I guess my question is, I'm, you know, the 11 new positions are fantastic, but does that exacerbate this issue?
Yes, any recurring cost makes this worse. If you had one-time things you're taking care of, then you don't have a growing, you know, issue for that. Also, you're right, on the expense side, that's where you have the ability to control, so it's going to be upcoming negotiations where it will help with this. Right now, we're, you know, paying for the benefits that were provided in the last ones.
Right.
So, that would be where the changes would come.
And as our CalPERS contribution goes up, and I think there's talk about PERS decreasing the discount rate, which makes our costs go up, those have to get paid, right? So, that comes right off the top, which means that if we have to cut somewhere, we're cutting services.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. And then, just kind of my final question for now, I know cities like Citrus Heights do a two-year budget cycle. I know this is a Herculean task for you guys every year, and going from one year to two year probably would be very, very painful at first, but in the long term, would it, is there a benefit to us doing a two-year budget cycle over annual?
From my perspective, there is. It would depend on how many updates or adjustments the council would want to make during the year, then it could end up being more work.
It's something that's very appealing, if it's a two-year budget, that is, maybe there's an opportunity to do some small adjustments once, or-
Yeah.
Otherwise, it just becomes an exercise in continual budgeting.
But as you have your, you know, your city manager meetings with your peers and stuff, it might be an interesting conversation to find out who does it, and how it's working for them.
I'm trying to remember, I think Rancho Cordova, and maybe also Citrus Heights have recently transitioned to two-year budgets. It's something I've, I would love to transition to two-year budgets, but it would have to be kind of in agreement with the city council as to what that looks and feels like, so it's just not perpetual, you know, updating.
Okay.
Madam Vice Mayor, you might actually require a charter amendment, but something that we can do, if that's what the council desires.
Interesting, okay, thank you.
Gotcha, okay, well, I'll keep my comments brief. I, you know, having the job that I have right now, I've had a great insight into the development of this, so most of the things I've had questions about have been answered. I want to also thank all of the staff for pitching in on this. I know that it's, it's a challenge to get your brain wrapped around constraints that are real, and to come up with a operating strategy that matches up with the budget that's available. Nowhere is that more challenging than in the police department, and particularly, Chief Hillman, I want to thank you for being creative and flexible, and having good ideas along the way here. So, I'll leave that on the budget there. The only last thing I'll say is that the, you know, the question that Judy asked earlier about, you know, what do other cities do, I think really highlights the sources of revenue that other cities have. And the largest, I mean, the largest part of the challenge that we are facing is that while we do get some additional revenue each year, it's nowhere near enough to keep up with the demands of maintaining everything that we own. And the, you know, the fact that we were able to add officers to the police department this year, add a training chief for fire, do some other small projects, get some new kitchen equipment, and tables and chairs, and, you know, figure out a way to, you know, rehabilitate Kids Play Park, those are all great, but the list behind them is absolutely a mile long of things that everybody would like to be able to do. And the Folsom that we expect, and the Folsom we can afford, are two radically different things right now. So, I would just take that into account as we talk through some other items on the budget, and as we look forward to the election in November, because cities that have that additional revenue source are able to do a lot more than we are right now. So, not to say that we don't have to be careful with what we spend money on, not to say that we don't need to seek revenue sources other than what we talked about, but we have a means to get ourselves heading, I guess, back on course. And the analogy I would use with this chart right here is that if you're sailing, if you're sailing and you are not, and the wind keeps picking up, it makes you go faster in the wrong direction, unless you change course. So, you've got to do both things, okay? So, anyway, that's where we're at with this. Thank you very much to everybody who worked on it.
I have a couple of questions, just so they can prepare.
We're moving on.
I have a couple of questions about the budget for her to bring in two weeks. There's nothing wrong with me having two more questions.
Okay, two more questions.
I mean, if you don't want me to ask, I am elected to serve this community, and I have questions that I think are relevant.
You have an opportunity to ask questions, but please go ahead.
Okay.
You want to get the last word, go.
So, I don't want the last word. I, so I'm curious, I didn't see it in the slides, but the $5 million in approved cost increases, that I think you're referring to the approved cost increases that we had throughout the year, and consent agendas and other items, is that correct?
I could take you back to the slide, if you want to see it, they were listed.
Yeah, I just want a list of all of those, I know-
Yeah, it was on the slide, it was $4 million in the cost increases for salary and benefit for the MOU, and then there was a list of the true-ups underneath that.
Okay, so, I did take some pictures, I couldn't find it in my pictures, but we'll get that in the slide.
We put the slides online already, they're already up there.
Oh, perfect, okay, thank you. That's, that was the question. And then, how much of the budget were, of this drafted budget were true-ups?
That was the bottom part, and I'd have to add them all up, but it was about less than a million dollars.
They're all listed?
Yeah, it was all listed.
Perfect, that's my question, thank you.
Excellent. Okay, thank you, let's move on to the consent calendar.
Yep, next is your consent calendar.
Does anybody like to pull anything for discussion?
I have a-
Go ahead, I want to pull number six, Mayor. I know we have received a letter from a resident, I just want to get some clarifying questions.
Very good.
And 12, I have a question on.
12, okay, I'll take a motion on four.
I'll go ahead and move four, five, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, and 13.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Councilmembers Roba-
Yes.
Aquino-
Yes.
Chalamchela-
Yes.
Rodriguez-
Yes.
And Kozlowski.
Yes, okay, item number six.
That's ordinance number 1344, this is before the council for second reading and adoption.
Yeah. Testament, probably you might have seen the resident's note, email, about keeping high-level percentages as a guardrail, rather than removing everything. That's one concern, and the second concern is, which ones, the fee, community, support, do you have any comments? I want to make sure it is public, and we are talking about that.
Yeah, so, we're not getting rid of all the guardrails, we are recommending generally 100% cost recovery. However, the city council has the discretion to set the cost recovery amounts lower, if it so chooses, for things like community benefit, or economic, you know, or economic development reasons. In the case of the special event fee permits, we are not bringing that forward to you tonight. We are, we will be discussing that later this year, and so the council can choose to set that at whatever level it deems, it deems fit, regardless of what the actual staff costs are, because, for example, you could say, "Well, these provide an economic development benefit," or "a community benefit," or other reasons why we should keep that fee lower. But we're not, we're not jettisoning, jettisoning the guardrails, the guardrails are still there, which is generally, you know, in most cases, 100% cost recovery.
Thank you, again. I think, I don't have any other questions, if anyone has, otherwise, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
On number six.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, anybody second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and a third.
Councilmembers Roba-
Yes.
Aquino-
Yes.
Chalamchela-
Yes.
Rodriguez-
Yes.
And Kozlowski.
Yes, okay, item number 12.
Item number 12 is resolution number 11208, this is a resolution authorizing staff to submit a grant application to the Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality Management District for the 2024 Sacramento Emergency Clean Air Transportation Program, funding round for the purchase of five light-duty battery electric vehicles. So, my question is here, is how many light-duty trucks do we need? Or, I'll just ask Elaine, and then she can ask. And then, because I can see there's a minimum city purchase commitment of at least five vehicles under whatever, so, I mean, are we just doing this to get a grant for electric vehicles? Because we're, are we getting ahead of needing to comply with the state, which I believe the state's going to change their compliance dates? Or do we need five light-duty trucks right now? Because in the end, so the grants for 100,000 are 20,000 each truck for an electric vehicle, which only cover about 20,000 of each truck, leaving about 130,000 that would be required from the general fund. So, is this, is this really, are we really in need of five trucks right now?
Are they necessarily trucks? I guess is also-
Light-duty trucks is what they're suggesting.
They are trucks, we're trying to take advantage of a grant program to continue progressing toward the requirement that's been imposed upon us. If it changes, that's great, but right now, it's our reality to push toward the goal to electrify our fleet.
So, do, are we in need of, to replace trucks at this moment, like, right now? Or do we have another year or two?
Ryan, do you have any comment on the life expectancy of our fleet trucks?
Actually, I'd ask Maria McKee, the General Services Manager, to come up, she would probably be best to answer that.
Hi, Maria, I didn't see you there, I apologize, thank you.
Do we have worn-out trucks?
We do.
Based on the whole rest of the discussion tonight, yeah.
We do, however, primarily, this was to seek grant funding, and what we found when we looked into the grant funding was that it doesn't really cover a lot of what we would need. This is, to answer the question directly, it's optional at this time, we don't have to purchase these yet, they won't- to purchase these yet. They won't count toward our compliance with advanced clean fleets. This would be to get ahead of the future regulations.
Okay. I think for all the reasons she said, I'm not in favor of this right now. It's, it takes a little time to do grant work for this. I believe that electric vehicles, we're going to move towards hybrid. I mean, there's a whole other issues, a lot of issues here. So, and I don't think our community is going to respond well to this either.
What, what is your recommendation, Marie?
I think there's some potential cost savings in the long run if we purchase these now, but there is an upfront cost. And, you know, I understand right now there's, you know, a lot of reasons to save money.
So if we bought a light duty pickup truck, what's that running us nowadays roughly?
Um, the light duty pickup trucks.
Just a regular gas Ford F-150 or whatever you classify as light duty?
They're in the 50.
50, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, it depends. It can vary quite a bit depending on the truck and the availability. We've had to buy trucks that we wouldn't necessarily have specced exactly that way just because of availability over the last few years. So.
So if we had a $20,000 grant for an electric one, what does that leave us as a cost for that battery-operated vehicle?
The fleet manager estimated the $230,000 total, so 130,000 would be the max. And we wouldn't necessarily need to get all pickup trucks. These are proposed as pool vehicles. So we could do a combination of pickup trucks and cars. And we would also evaluate older vehicles to eliminate from the fleet. Our goal is eventually to reduce the fleet. That saves insurance costs, saves fuel cost. So there is some long-term savings to this. That amount would depend on what vehicles we get and which ones we're able to take out of service.
And just for those that aren't reading the packet, I mean, and the audience are listening, the future savings of maintenance and fuel costs is estimated to be about $1,500 a year. So we're not talking a huge amount of difference, so.
The, uh, what's my question? The charging infrastructure, if these are pool vehicles, where do they live? And do we have chargers there already?
They would have to share the chargers that are here at City Hall at this time. Or they could be deployed, you know, even as pool vehicles in other locations. But the, the vision for this proposal is to be here at City Hall. The vehicles we currently have are hybrids, and so they don't necessarily need to be on the chargers as often as they are.
Okay, last question. If we're successful in getting the, if we apply for the grant and we're successful, what's the, what's the life of that money before you have to spend it? Like, when do you need to spend it by?
45 days. It's very fast.
45 days, oh my gosh.
And then
Is that impossible to get these cars?
The vehicles have to be ordered within 45. They have to be turned around and deployed within 180 days. That was one of the reasons that we chose to propose it for the light duty vehicles rather than the medium to heavy duty. Also, ACF played a role in that. They don't count toward our compliance credits.
So if you put an order in for a GMC Sierra that was battery-powered, like I would like to do, you're not going to get one until 2028 probably. So that would be perfect.
Probably looking at Bolts and Mavericks and
Gotcha.
More readily available vehicles.
I don't have any problem with pursuing a grant, but your point is well taken.
I'll just add a little bit. So I represent the city on the Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality Management District Board. This grant came through that. So I send everything, you know, hey, to the city, right? So if you're, I mean, you're the, the expert. If your recommendation is we don't need to do these and we don't need to apply now, I'm fine with that. But at the same time, we are always buying vehicles. So if, if there is a need, always a need for vehicles, and we can get somebody else to pay $100,000 of that cost, then, then there is value to it, I think.
There is value to it. And it does update a lot of vehicles that we have that we could get rid of.
All right. Anybody like to make a motion or comment?
I just want to emphasize one more time on those dying vehicles. That's the frequent request we get here as well. Cost of maintaining, that's another thing probably you can emphasize on besides not just replacing for the sake of replacing.
Right. It's not just to replace it for the sake of replacing it. It also moves forward our electrification goals. Because once this does become a requirement, then it will no longer be eligible for any funding. So to Sarah's point, this is an opportunity to get some funding toward this where in the future we may not be able to.
Yeah. The, the, the charging infrastructure you mentioned, people has to come from there to here to charge. Are we going to get another big bill for 250K there? That's another concern also I have on this one.
The vehicles would actually live here.
Oh, they live here?
On the city campus. Yeah.
And we have already infrastructure in place.
We have some charging infrastructure, yes.
I want to make sure, right?
We wouldn't have dedicated chargers for every single vehicle like we do now, but there's, there's enough infrastructure to cover it.
So if you, if you didn't get these, if you didn't apply and win this grant, how are you replacing vehicles? When are you replacing vehicles? Or you just don't?
Some of these vehicles may, may or may not be replaced. The individual departments replace vehicles, and so they put in budget requests for their own vehicles. So as the fleet department, we don't always know who's replacing which vehicles. And this would move us toward more of a controlled motor pool rather than, we would hope that we could reduce some of the individual department vehicles. Because we, as the fleet department, we don't have control over when these vehicles are purchased. You do.
And, and these funds are coming from enterprise, not from the general fund?
No, this is all general fund. The enterprise funds have already, well, solid waste specifically, we've already transitioned all of our administrative vehicles to all-electric. We only have work vehicles that are diesel and fuel, or diesel and gas now. And EWR has their own vehicle purchasing that they're doing. So these, these would all be general fund.
But we would be paying some money upfront for long-term savings. But, but
Yes. Yes.
Well, if there are no questions, I'll go ahead and move resolution 11208.
I can second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please call a roll.
Council members, Rorba.
No.
Aquino.
Yes.
Chalem Chirla.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
And Kozlowski.
Yes.
The motion passes.
All right. Takes us to item number 14, public hearing.
Yeah, that's your public hearing item tonight. This is resolution number 118, 11186, a resolution to adopt an amended user fee schedule for community development, engineering, and building services. This public hearing was continued from May 14.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Kozlowski and council members. Josh Kincaid with the Community Development Department. And I've got a PowerPoint presentation to pull up here, then we can get going on this fee update item. Okay. Here we are. All right. So tonight I will be presenting to you proposed modifications to the Community Development Department's building and engineering fee schedules. We last spoke about Community Development Department fees during the council workshop on March 12th of this year and discussed some proposed changes staff had to the, to the fee schedule. CDD fees hadn't been substantially updated since 2006, as we discussed, and no longer reflect actual staff time. And our new online system also does not currently have a, a long-term funding source. Staff retained a consultant, ClearSource consulting to study our fees and based on a fully burdened staff rate and amount of time it takes to complete tasks. At the March 12th meeting, council generally stated that building and engineering fees may need to be separated from planning and special event fees. And that's what staff has done. Tonight, we're presenting only the building and engineering fee updates. Planning fees will be presented upon conclusion of the zoning code update next year, excuse me, since that may affect planning processes and special event permit fees are planned to be discussed later this year after some additional research has been done by staff. So note that the fees for appeals as well fall under the planning fees. So those are also not proposed to be changed at this time. Those will come forward with planning. All right. So for a brief reminder, engineering fees have been modified to better reflect the scope of work for the projects that engineering sees. Encroachment permits were changed to tiered levels to reflect the scope and the schedule of work. Tree permit fees would now be tiered and increased when multiple trees are proposed for removal. Annual permits are tiered and would be billed on a time and materials basis. Production home landscape review would now be a fixed fee, and fees involving the contract city surveyor were updated to reflect their billable rate. Since that time of last presenting this to you, we've also separated the final map amendments and the certificate of correction fees. They were initially one consolidated fee. And after some discussion, we determined that those tasks do take a very different amount of work, and so we have separated them. Now, looking at the proposed building divisions fee changes, updates include new flat rates for common residential permit types, restructuring fees related to subdivision developments, revising project valuation-based portions of the fee schedule to instead reflect staff time, and modifying our general plan and zoning code update fee for simplicity while retaining approximately the current rate of return for that fee. Note that the general plan and zoning code update fee would only be charged on the types of projects that benefit from the updates to those documents. Those include new construction, additions, tenant improvements, and residential remodels. Finally, the major change that we made since the workshop is regarding the costs associated with the updates in the licensing for online permitting, submittal and processing technology. We had previously proposed a standalone technology fee to be placed on all building permits. And after discussion, we are now proposing to fold these annual costs into the fully burdened hourly rates used for building permit fees, similar to what we do for Microsoft Office 365, these types of annual licensing fees that we get. This raised the proposed building fees by approximately 2%. However, without the separate tech fee, the final cost for the applicant would be about the same. All right. Now, looking at some of the effects of these fee modifications, we do anticipate an additional $1 million annually for the general fund. On the applicant side, we are seeing about a 2% to 3% annual increase since the last time we comprehensively looked at these fees in 2006. So it's a bit of a jump from where we are currently, but it does represent a 2% to 3% increase since that point in 2006. These new fees would keep us in the mid-range of what is being charged for similar processes in the region, as is shown in the, in the fee study. A reasonable test was also performed by the consultant as part of the fee study, and that determined that the proposed fees are legally justifiable. And finally, the increased building rates would provide a funding source for an estimated $122,000 annually for licensing and, and update fees for the online submittal and review systems. However, in the future, if we were to add additional software or technology services, we would need to present a new fee study to update our overhead rate again to account for those revamped technologies. So looking at some of the outreach that we performed, we did send a notice of the proposed fee updates to all of our online users, which include contractors, developers, businesses, and members of the public, as well as three key interest groups that we presented our initial proposed updates to. You may recall that the North State Building Industry Association had requested a tiered rollout of the new fees to keep them from jumping too much all at once. We believe that holding off several months on the planning fee updates as proposed helps accomplish a similar goal, at least for projects that need both planning entitlements and permits from building and engineering. So we did not propose a tiered rollout because of that. We also provided a summary and link to the proposed changes to the general public via the city's e-newsletter. So looking ahead, if the fee updates are passed tonight, we would distribute the updated fee schedule to the public in the coming months. And the fees would go into effect on August 1st of this year. And finally, looking past that, we anticipate bringing forward the planning fees in tandem with the, with the zoning code update, as I mentioned previously, as, as well as some process changes for planning. First quarter 2025 is what we anticipate at this point. And the special event permit fees, as I said, would go later this year is the, is the plan at this point. So with that, we can take questions from the council. We do have Desmond Parentin here with planning, Rebecca Neves, city engineer, and Allison Conwinski with building to help answer these questions. We also do have Terry Madsen with our fee consultant that presented last time with, with ClearSource on the Webex call-in if you do have any questions about the study itself.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So clarifying questions from the council. We don't have any requests to speak on this item right now. So if you feel so compelled, you got to get your blue card in straight away while questions are being asked, if there are any. So.
I actually have, my question is for Stacy. So this projected increase of $1 million in fees, is that reflected in your budget, I believe?
About half.
About half. Okay, thank you.
Because of the BIA's request in, in rolling increase?
Well, we just didn't want to put a full year's worth in. This isn't starting until August. We also know that the study was based on kind of a high point year. So we don't know exactly what will happen in the next year. So we want to have some experience with the new fees before we appropriate it, you know, with expenditures.
Yeah. I have one quick follow-up question, Mayor. On, we just heard in 2425 budget, there is $155,000 for community development software upgrades. And we just heard from you, usually we roll those costs into, like Microsoft, or track, track it into the hourly rate. So this line item and that statement, how do we reconcile those two? Do we need this $155,000 here?
I think, I'm, I'm going to try and answer for you, which I think the 155 is for new software and the, the technology fee that we rolled into everything is for ongoing subscription costs. Is that reasonably accurate?
Yeah, just to clarify, so we're, we're actually, it's essentially new software. We're moving to the cloud with one of our programs. It's currently on-site right now, and we're moving to the cloud. That'll help reduce long-term expenses, both associated with IT staff and, and their, and their time, and as well as eliminating the need for a server for us, for the Community Development Department going forward in the future. Yeah. So these are, these are kind of one-time costs. And then we've got an ongoing annual cost associated with them. So the, the cost that Josh talked about, the 122,000, helps to cover the annual cost of both of our comm dev program, also known as Tracket, and, and we're moving to Blue Beam from project docs because Blue Beam is less expensive than project docs, and they're no longer maintaining the on-premise version, which is lower cost than, they're making us go to a, a, a cloud version, which is much more expensive. So by switching to Blue Beam, we will save money over the long run.
Good.
Thank you.
All right. Rosario, anything?
I don't.
Anna? Okay. I don't have any questions either. Thank you for revising this and bringing it back to us. We do have one request to speak.
We do. So we'll open the public hearing, and our first speaker will be Bill Rominelli.
You know, as the night goes on, the comments have to be better and better.
They also have to get briefer and briefer. I just have a question, and forgive me if this has been discussed, and I just hadn't heard it, but given that these fees have not been adjusted since 2006, is there a plan in place, once this new fee structure is in place, to systematically, every year, apply a COLA to it or something like that so that we're not in this situation again where we're looking back 15 years in time? That's just my only question. Thank you.
So we, we are annually adjusting, we will be annually adjusting these, these fees in conjunction with finance based on changes in, in the Consumer Price Index. But as Josh mentioned, if we were to do, you know, any other services or software, things like that, we would need to do a, a new fee study to make sure that our overhead rates and our overall fee levels are, are correct.
Gotcha. So the answer to Bill's discreet question is yes, based on CPI?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right. Any other comments?
You have no further requests to speak.
Okay, public hearing is closed. Council, your prerogative with further discussion or a motion?
I'll go ahead and move resolution number 11186.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Council members, Rorba.
Yes.
Aquino.
Yes.
Chalem Chirla.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
And Kozlowski.
Yes. Okay, new business. Yes, okay, new business.
Okay, your last discussion item this evening is new business item number 15. This is resolution number 11207. This is the resolution submitting the Folsom residents' public safety and quality of life measure to the qualified voters of the city to add a special transaction and use tax at the rate of 1%, authorizing the filing of written arguments regarding the measure and directing the city attorney to prepare an impartial analysis for said measure.
Thank you, Madam Burke. Good evening, Madam, Mr. Mayor, and members of City Council, a bit jet lagged. My name is Stephen Wong, your city attorney. So on November 5, 2024, Folsom voters in Council Districts 2 and 4 will be asked to elect a council member in their district. Additionally, since the Citizens Initiative has qualified for the ballot, all registered voters throughout the city will also be asked to vote on the Citizens Initiative Special Sales Tax Revenue Measure. The Citizens Initiative proposes a 1% special sales tax where 100% of the proceeds from the new tax will remain in the city. Proceeds from that tax can only be used for the specific purposes identified in the tax measure, not for any general governmental purposes. The initiative requires that the tax be subject to an independent annual audit and also citizens oversight. Here is a broad overview of the proposed special sales tax measure with six categories of specific purposes. As you can see, we have police, fire protection, parks and trail improvements, traffic and street maintenance, economic development, and also major capital improvement projects. The specifics are specified in the revenue measure attached to the staff report. And here is what the ballot measure will look like in the November election. And the measure asks citizens to vote on whether the measure to enact a 1% transaction and use tax, which is the state's way of saying sales tax, providing approximately $29 million annually until ended by the voters, requiring local control, citizen oversight, independent annual audits, with all funds staying in Folsom, and proceeds used only for the following: 20% for police services, 20% for fire protection, 15% for parks, trail improvement, 15% for traffic, street maintenance, 15% for community enhancement, economic development, and 50% for major capital improvement projects be adopted.
And Steve, the citizens group crafted that language?
I crafted the language, subject to the limitations that the language cannot exceed 75 words. That is the maximum we can allow.
Okay.
And this is the max. Hence, you see some truncated abbreviations. But it has to be accurate and hence the six major categories of the special purposes are stated. Now, because the Citizens Initiative has qualified for ballot, the city council has the mandatory ministerial duty to submit it to the voters without alteration. That is what the law requires. With that, the staff recommends that the city council pass and adopt resolution 11207 to submit the initiative special tax measure to the voters in November. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Rosario, any questions?
Oh, these are just questions, no comments?
Questions, public comment, and then...
Okay, I have no questions.
Commentary.
I have a question and I asked our city manager this earlier and I think you just said it, that there are no... My concern was, it's on page 230. I'm just going to read it and you're probably going to tell me the answer. The maintenance of effort, that the general fund contribution approved by the city council in the 2023, 24 budget, that would be, I don't know how to explain suplamation, but actually, there are a lot of questions about this. Is it supplantation, suplamation? What is it called?
I think it's supplantation.
Supplantation? And it's saying that, I'm not sure what the percentage is, but maybe one who can speak clearly on what that means can explain it and then I can ask my question.
So supplanting means that you replace or substitute one source of funding for another source of funding. So if you're saying you cannot supplant with a measure, that means you can't bring in $2 million of extra revenue and go, oops, sorry, police department, we're taking $2 million away from you now.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Yes, I understood, it's just not enough to repeat it because I get this question a lot. Well, they'll just adjust the current general fund and that's not allowed and I think there's a percentage that you can vary your general fund from that, but it's not a very big percentage. But in the maintenance of effort, it's using a pinpoint in time of the 2324 budget and I would be a lot more comfortable instead of using one year's budget to do maybe an average of eight years from the 2425 budget and pass. And I just don't know if that's something that we could add an addendum to with this or be...
You're asking a very good question, Councilmember Rorba. So the answer is unfortunately, no, since this is not a city council dollar measure, this is a citizens initiative. So they write it, they present it to the voters, and the voters decide. However, having said that, the city council as a whole can adjust the city budget, just not this part of it. The special tax, the budget for the special budget from revenues from the special sales tax from this initiative measure can only be used as prescribed.
Correct, right.
Everything else can be adjusted.
The supplantation language is in what was presented to voters to gather signatures with the intention that we not change the way that we distribute funds that we already have from other sources in some dramatically different way.
With the intention and of course, the proponents are in audience tonight as well they can explain and accurately answer this question. The intention, as I understand it, is so that, as you have all heard, so that we do not tell the citizens, we will now take away the $1 this special sales tax brings in and use for another purpose. That's not the intent. The intent is to add to, add to the city's budget.
Okay, so you answered my, I had two questions and that basically, we can't change it, the little detail.
That's correct, not the initiative.
Very good. Questions? YK, any question?
No, Citizens Advisory Oversight Committee, that's also locked or it is up for...
That is in the initiative ordinance and the city council will now, if it passes, will be tasked to create this citizens oversight committee. It will be a requirement for the council to create one.
Got it.
But are you asking if we can, you know, I don't see like a finance expert in there or something, so can we add to that committee as a council when we...
There is a provision on page 235. As you can see, there's a provision for citizens oversight committee. I just flew from Africa. I am jet lagged, forgive me. So there are certain provisions where the city council has flexibility, but there are certain requirements that are specified in this section. And of course, the proponents can explain that better.
Okay.
All right, well, I'm about to open the public part of this, so why don't we ask them to answer that as we go in terms of what the composition of the oversight committee was conceived to be?
It's exactly in there, too.
What's that?
It's in the text of the measure.
It's in the text, it's really clear.
Oh, perfect, okay.
Yeah, it's clearly in the text.
Not everybody's going to read the text of the measure. It would be worthwhile to hear it. Okay, why don't you call our speakers up?
Okay, as usual, I'll do them and I'll call the speaker and let you know who's next so you can be ready. First speaker will be Dennis Haglen. Dennis will be followed by Gary Qualseth.
Well, good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Dennis Haglen. I'm a senior vice president with Dewberry Engineers and I've been a transportation engineer for over 30 years, Folsom resident for about 25 years, and I'm here to speak on, in favor of the initiative from a transportation perspective. You know, something that caught my eye that was interesting in the staff materials was all departments are going with less. Now, in my opinion, as a Folsom resident, I don't think that's fair to city staff. I don't think that's fair to our community and it's a trend that I don't really think anybody wants to continue. You know, I think we all agree that we want the city of Folsom to be the number one city in the region. Heck, we'll go with the nation, maybe the world, but bringing it down to the region, I think it's important that we make sure that we do not fall behind, is what I'd say. Now, until recently, the city of Folsom was ranked number one on the local streets and roads conditions pavement in, of all jurisdictions in Sacramento County. The city of Elk Grove has surpassed us, city of Rancho Cordova has caught up to us, and those two cities have one thing in common, they recently passed a sales tax measure and it's allowed them to do a lot of good things, as the mayor has pointed out. With the current budgetary problems that we're having right now, I think the local streets and roads conditions, the infrastructure is just going to continue to decline unless we do something about it, while the city just looks for other funding sources to fill the gap, so to speak. This measure will fill that gap, though, and it'll make sure that we continue to provide an infrastructure that's in a good state of repair and in good condition. Maintenance and rehabilitation of the storm drain system and water quality in the American River is also something we cannot ignore. You know, this is something when problems occur with these two things, it's something the city has to react to and they have to take from, as I understand it, the general fund to deal with these issues and that takes away from vital resources like police, fire, safety, parks. And you're in a reactive mode instead of a preventative mode. One of my biggest passions is asset management and you can save a tremendous amount of money by making sure that you take care of your assets using preventive maintenance funds. But you're only going to do that with a revenue source and that's why I think this is an incredible revenue source for everybody to support. Now, the mayor put it much better than I'm going to put it, but I've seen a lot of self-help counties and cities and I've seen the difference of somebody who passes a self-tax measure and some cities that don't and it will make you so much stronger as a city. Otherwise, you will fall behind, so I just encourage everybody to support the sales tax measure. I'd like to thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Okay, our next speaker is Gary Qualseth, who will be followed by Dan Carson.
Hello, honorable city council members. Thanks for the opportunity to speak with you tonight and present my concerns and I'm sure that of many other Folsom residents as well. I'm sure as you, I'm just one mosquito here tonight. I'm sure as you heard from Back to Control, where there's one, there's many other thousand more out there. As you've also heard this evening, city staff have been presenting their concern about a budget structural deficit potentially facing the city. A budget structural deficit means the city plans to spend more than it brings in. Plain and simple, staff wants to spend more than it has in that situation. There are several ways to address this that include a variety of options such as balancing the budget, meaning budgeting for expenditures to equal revenues and hopefully allow for a reserve, or cut expenses to meet expected revenues, or a combination of increasing revenue sources and cutting expenditures. And lastly, there's a simple way that government likes to approach it of increasing taxes on its residents and the citizens of Folsom. Now, if I could, I would encourage you to vote no on this agenda item, send this back to city staff to explore and present more alternatives and solutions. Staff should present to the council alternatives to address fiscal concerns, not just one option. All I've seen is for them to present a financial crisis that can only be solved by increasing taxes upon its residents on a permanent basis. There are many flaws in the proposed language that are drafted for this sales tax increase and the administration thereof. Financial staff and the city manager have shown in earlier presentations, there's may be a budget deficit shortfall in future years, amounting to maybe $1 to $5 million per year over the next five years. I think if you look at slide 40 tonight, you'll see that. They've also reported that a 1% sales tax increase will bring in $29 million a year. This is far way too much more than is needed. This will result in a significant surplus for the city. There's no need for a permanent sales tax increase of this magnitude of 1%. If anything, it should be significantly lower percentage, which are presented by other local jurisdictions. So potentially, in this scenario, there's a surplus of $130 million over the next five years, based on the presentations tonight and the estimation of $29 million revenue. Our request suggests that the city try to manage the situation from both ends. Cut expenses and/or manage them better, look for other revenue sources that have been mentioned tonight, like business licenses for all businesses in Folsom, even home-based businesses and rentals, even maybe get everyone's pet licensed and pay that license fee that's on the fee schedule, that I'm sure there's not many of those that are paid. Alarm permits, code enforcement fines and penalties, late fees on utility bills that are actually charged. It's nice that we don't get charged late fees, but it's a revenue source and it's a use of money, cost of use of money. Maybe an increase in the TOT or the transit occupancy tax.
You've reached your three minutes. Can you bring it to a conclusion?
Got it.
You're counting up now.
No, it's a red light, huh? Okay, well, I guess I'll be back next time.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, our next speaker is Dan Carson, who will be followed by Justin Rathel.
Good evening. My name is Dan Carson with Folsom Firefighters Association, Sacramento area firefighters local 522. I'm here tonight to talk about our advocacy for the tax measure. Pretty much everything we talked about tonight shows a need for a 1% sales tax. We talked about needing a hot team, fully funded hot team. We talked about having to have Sack County put in their fair share of our taxes. Those are all things we're no longer going to hold our breath for. We've been waiting for engine 35. I am very happy to see a division chief of training in the proposed budget for us this year, but the fact of the matter is, the central district, the historic district, Natoma Station are all still currently going without a fire engine. So that means if you go to bed at night and you sleep tight, your house catches on fire, just know the second closest fire station will be bringing you fire and water. This sales tax measure fixes all of these problems. It allows proper funding for not only the fire department, not only the police department, but every other area within Folsom and just would urge you to put the maximum amount of education you can into our citizens of what not only will be given to us with this sales tax measure, but what is going to be taken away. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Justin Rathel, who will be followed by Rich Francis.
Good evening, Mayor Kozlowski, council members, Justin Rathel. Been out trying to convince my friends to pass a sales tax, which is always fun. Thank you for your time tonight and also your open discussion around our competing budget priorities. Here in Folsom, as I'm sure you know, we have very high expectations when it comes to public safety, emergency response, our trails and park amenities, and yes, even our pavement quality. For many years, you and your predecessors have managed to make ends meet and maintain our high expectations, but we're now starting to feel the effects of a highly constrained budget and our reputation of being the safest city with the best trails and parks and the best roads to get there on is slipping. As I've been out talking to residents on this measure, the question has come up a few times about why economic development are allocated in our pie. They clearly aren't as important as more officers or a needed fire engine or parks that are being closed due to disrepair. And I would agree, when we talk about the short-term funding of our priorities, these services are our top priorities for our tax dollars, but we must also plan for the long-term viability of our city. Economic development is one of the reasons Folsom was able to delay passing a sales tax measure much longer than our neighbors. We have a long history of incentivizing businesses to add high-paying jobs here and also increasing our sales tax base. Some examples of economic development, as I'm sure you're aware of, many of them include annexing Folsom into SMUD to bring intel here, annexing land for an auto mall. We've incentivized Palladio with a sales tax sharing agreement. We redeveloped Sutter Street with redevelopment funds to the tune of $40 million. These projects, Palladio and Sutter Street, bring people from outside of Folsom to shop in Folsom and so that allows them to contribute to the police and fire protection and the trails that they use here in Folsom. Economic development is our way to make sure the sales tax measure is 1% and done. We'll use these economic development funds for projects that bring more jobs and revenue into the city, so the city doesn't come back to the voters and ask for another revenue measure, as has happened in Rancho Cordova, Galt, and many other municipalities. These funds are outlined to be used by the city for specific purposes and I'd just like to read that section of the measure so it's perfectly clear. The Community Enhancement and Economic Development Fund shall be used for investments, projects, and staff or... and staff or contractors to maintain and enhance the quality of life and long-term economic viability of the city of Folsom. Permitted uses of these funds include Economic Development Administration, investments that yield a net positive impact on jobs or revenues in the city, community volunteer resources and support, projects consistent with a city-adopted master plan approved by the city council, and a reserve fund for future expenditures consistent with the uses described in this subdivision.
Justin, you need to bring it to conclusion.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for considering this and spreading the word about our economic challenges here in Folsom.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Rich Francis, who will then be followed by the last two speakers, Robert Goss and Bruce Klein.
Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you for allowing me to address. First thing I'd like to say tonight is, I'd like to commend the city manager and the finance department for putting together that budget. It's pretty lean and showed great restraint. I'd like to pick you guys up and send you to DC. Pretty impressive. My name's Rich Francis. I'm here as a 24-year resident and the current president of the Folsom Athletic Association and to voice our organization's 100% support for the Sales Tax Ballot Initiative that the folks from Folsom Takes Action have accomplished. The Folsom Athletic Association has 18 youth sports groups as part of our membership, which represent roughly 6,000 children and 12,000 parents, grandparents, aunts, and uncles, all who use our sport, our local sports facilities, trails, parks, and et cetera. Many of those folks have signed on to support this ballot initiative through our efforts over the last several months. And among other categories, this 1% measure will get, generate monies for. It's imperative that we, as a community, pass this measure in the fall to support our trails, parks, and sports facilities, something Folsom has already, always been known for, and it's a long-term investment. And as a, as, like I said, 24-year resident here, I can tell that, and many of us can tell, that these parks and rec facilities are really starting to show wear, and they really need the, the maintenance that's been deferred. So we look forward to city council's support on this ballot measure, and in doing so, we hope the people will also support it and pass this measure this fall. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Hey, Rich, maybe try the capital, state first.
Excuse me?
Maybe send them to the state first.
Okay, our next speaker will be Robert Goss, who will be followed by Bruce Klein.
You have precisely three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. Robert Goss, co-chair of Folsom Takes Action. Just real quick, our approach has always been about the whole city. We're not favoring one department. You know where I come from, you know where others in the committee come from. We're all about the entire city of Folsom, and so demonstrated by 8,279 community residents that signed our petition. Here's a couple of things that we heard while we're out there doing this, because this represents hundreds and hundreds of hours of talking to our community. There is indeed frustration with government. We found out that it's really state and federal government where that frustration lies. It's not as much with the city of Folsom. But we have also found that there is a lack of understanding about that. People don't generally understand that Folsom is a service organization, and when we start that conversation, it goes a lot better. There is a lack of knowledge about local government funding. Stacy and the city manager gave a phenomenal presentation. It's not generally known. I think you know that. That needs to be part of this education campaign. The, the city or the community, they don't understand the limits, limitations on requirements of proposition, or, yeah, Proposition 13, and the property tax growth that is capped at 2% unless you sell your home and it's reassessed. They, they don't understand the conversation we had tonight about the online sales tax that's diverted from the city. That has to be part of the education campaign. They don't understand the differences between the city of Elk Grove, city of Rancho Cordova, and city of Citrus Heights. They are all constructed very differently than a full-service city like the city of They also don't understand the influences that happen to the city that you have, as a, as a policy body, have no control over. The rising minimum wage, you're paying $20 an hour in minimum wage now, or you have to do that to compensate lifeguards at the aquatic center that have to be paid a little bit more than a burger flipper. And that has, you have no influence over that. You, you're obligated to do that. You don't have control over mandatory electrified fleet. Just, it's all cost. So here are some things we can do if the measure that has yet to be named is, is approved in November. Engine 35 and the nine firefighters that it takes to staff that is possible. Medic 34 is possible in the $5.8 million that this measure will generate. We talked about three officers or six officers. How about 12 or 13? That is completely doable in our measure. Completely doable, along with added dispatchers, analysts, and the technology for proper crime fighting. Another $5.8 million will fund that. We need to fix, upgrade pavement and, and our storm drain, like Dennis talked about. We need to fix, upgrade, and complete our parks, trails, and recreation facilities, both the latter to $4.35 million for that. Finally, our major capital and investing in our community. Investing is how we don't stand here and have this conversation again. And finally, there's no surplus. 60, 60 staff were requested and over $20 million in deferred maintenance. There is no surplus for years. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Robert.
Okay, our final speaker on this item will be Bruce Klein.
Good evening, mayor, city manager, members of the council. Thanks for having us here. Great, great night for Folsom, I think. And I appreciate the outline of fiscal challenges facing the city. We've spoken to those a number of times, and I'm very, very pleased to hear that we're going to be able to add additional police officers and the training chief. Absolutely crucial. Unfortunately, that doesn't scratch the surface of what the city really, really needs. No doubt, we need far more officers. We are far, far below the regional average relative to officers. It's been articulated tonight by, by council member Aquino, relative to Folsom Ranch and coverage down there. Robert Goss just mentioned a crew at Station 35 that was cut during the recession. That's got to come back. But beyond that, we, we all have heard, and the terrifying part about it is a 16, $16.5 million worth of structural deficit in the next four years. There is no avenue for that absent a revenue measure. And having to betsey to be a city council member over the next four years if we don't have a revenue measure, I just, I, I'm very concerned. I'm also very, very concerned about retention of our employees and recruitment of our employees. We have an absolute incredible town, and we need to take care of our town. That's why we did what we did. So there are a number of people in our committee here tonight, and I just want to say thank you so much for the amazing, amazing amount of work. Hundreds and hundreds, if not thousands, of hours put in. And I also like to shout out to the spouses and families of the people who did it, because they all sacrificed greatly to get us to the point we're here. You, you can't imagine the lift that it's taken to get to this point, and we're super proud about that, and we look forward to the next step. I'd like to acknowledge the groups that have supported us to this point. The Chamber, which represents 1,000 small businesses, Folsom Athletic Association, Friends of Folsom Parkway. Every former mayor who's not sitting on this dais has endorsed our measure. Friends of the Zoo, Friends of Folsom, the Folsom Fire Association, and virtually every other bargaining group who are representing the front line, people who see the impacts of our community. The city attorneys talked about the mandatory duty to place this on the ballot. I don't want to talk about a mandatory duty. We, you all know your mandatory duty to place a ballot that's put on by the citizens, that's a fundamental cornerstone of our democracy. But really, instead, let's just embrace this night as this is the way to get there. And this is a citizens-driven measure to get there, and I applaud all of those 8,279 people. We'll be zealously advocating for all departments, police, fire, parks, et cetera, through the course of, up to November. We need your help to educate as well, and I thank you for placing this on the ballot.
Very good. Thank you. Comments from the council. Rosario.
Okay, I'll start. We, the council, report to the residents and the voters. And one thing that I have been is greatly impressed with how this whole initiative has been organized, has been led. I have talked to people, not knowing that I was a council member, that's, that were at, in the historic district, in front of Walmart, in front of grocery stores on the street, and just the level of information that people had and how they understood the problems that we, you know, are encountering. So it has been really impressed to see how this initiative has been driven from this group. I will personally respect the process. I thought for taxes, I think if this were a general tax, I would probably be adamantly opposing, but I really do respect that the segments where, or how these percentages are broken down are going to tackle some of the issues that we're having. I, one of the constant conversations I have with people is the problems that are happening on East Bidwell and Iron Point and the traffic and the congestion. And, and I don't see us moving forward as quickly as possible to get the Empire Ranch interchange done, to get the pressure off of East Bidwell. But something like this gives me hope that that is going to be something that will be alleviated. And that is just one of a gazillion things that, over the past three and a half years, I have come to understand that it, we, we do have some pretty significant issues, and Folsom has always been seen as one of the most highly respected in the region and very innovative and very driven. And little by little, you, you begin to see how that begins to decline. And then you look at the cities that are up and coming, and the one thing they have is a little extra revenue to be able to do creative things for those cities. So I am going to respect the process and support this effort, just to give the voters of Folsom the decision-making power for that, for whatever change that they want. So I, I really do appreciate just the effort that has, that has gone in, because, oh, my voice is going. Because I love to see engaged residents. I think that is one of the best parts of being a council member, is when you see residents that are advocating for something, regardless whether I agree with it or not. It is one of the best parts of being a council member, is to see the residents moving forward with something that they strongly believe in. And so for that, I really do congratulate this group for working so hard and organizing and driving this effort. That's it.
Very good. Thank you. Anna?
I, I think, let's let the democratic process play out. I do appreciate one of the last speakers acknowledging the families of the people that were out there getting signatures and boots on the ground, as all of us who have campaigned before. That is something to be said. So there was a lot of effort going behind this, and I appreciate the citizens that did get involved, putting all the work into it. This is, you know, a simple question. Are we authorizing the filing of these written arguments and putting it on the ballot? And, you know, I mean, it's a simple answer to me. It's yes. And, you know, I, I think, I think what, another speaker made a comment of, you know, being forthcoming with the information for and against it, and why there's concerns, and why there would be concerns if this didn't pass. So I think just being open and honest with everybody is a, you know, hopefully this process goes really well and everyone stays above board. And so anyways, that's it.
Perfect. Thank you. YK?
I'm going to echo. I, I'm going to echo my colleague's statement. This is, I know, I was mentioning once our council was thinking to bring one proposition, let the voters decide what they want. So I respect that one, but I'm going to still make my comments, because, yes, there is 8,300 people has signed this one. Again, I want to sincerely thank all the hard work they are all doing. I saw, you know, I witnessed that one. My only thing is, I don't think so. Even 5% or 2% or 1% of those 8,500 people are seeing what is coming through the consent calendar here. I don't know whether they are all seeing it. That's where I want to emphasize one more time, mayor. I'm not going to repeat again whatever I said during the budget time. There is potential, a decent room to increase the revenue in our town. Taxes is one, but otherwise also, we do have, I think I'll outline three of them, as, let's, let's put the, let's put the challenge in front of the department's head. They have a great challenge, how they can get extra dollar innovatively, not the previous one. And again, the sales tax one, I'm going to emphasize again. We haven't done the real due diligence, even though we are going to increase to the voters the importance of buying local. And, and the, the third one, which I mentioned also, I really, really want to emphasize that one, even though we are going to bring more revenue to this one. These are, you know, some leaks. We got to fix it. Otherwise, even though we bring more, we'll have a challenge. I, I, you know, I, I'm going to be stepping down on this November. That's not my point here. We, as elected officials, should be the goods steward of the taxpayers' money. If we see something, I have to speak. I, I know mayor may probably agree on this one. Last three budget seasons, I argued, let's give them the fire department, firefighters. That way, you won't have the overtime we have to pay one and a half times. I'm looking at 2024 budget, every time fire department was overtime, this year, under budget of half a million dollars. So again, I just want to make my point clear here. I wish this could have been a half a cent. I, I advocated so many times on this dais, I just want to repeat what it is, because there is a potential revenue coming from these if we can work sincerely and hard. But again, I respect residents, and I'll, I'll definitely support this one cent for them. Thank you, sir.
Very good. Okay. Sarah?
I just want to be very clear for the public about what it is we're doing right now. This is simply a procedural vote. We're putting the item on the ballot.
Thank you, Sarah.
Just as we would for any citizens' measure that came before us. So that's it.
Okay. Well, I reserved speaking last on this one so that I could make the motion to approve Resolution Number 11207 for the specific reasons that have been outlined by my colleagues. With respect to Gary's comments, you absolutely are right to be skeptical and to ask the questions that you have, and I invite you to come see me. I'm happy to take some time with you and kind of walk through all of those things, because they are the things that Bruce was referring to, that everybody needs to have a chance to get a full understanding of all of those individual things. With respect to YK's comments, no question, we need to continue down four different paths at the same time. We need to be working on economic development. We need to be working on revenue recovery and new revenue. We need to be working on cost controls. Those are, those are table stakes that we have to be doing all the time. We've gotten really good at them on the cost control part out of necessity. Okay? But as I said earlier this evening, there is a mile-long list of things that we would like to be able to do, and the sales tax helps us with that. So with all of that said, I'm moving it.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second.
Councilmembers Rorba?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Chalamchela?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Kozlowski?
Yes. Okay. And thank you to everybody who worked on this. It was a Herculean task to get one in every five voters in Folsom to sign that ballot initiative. All right, we are on to council requests for future agenda items. Is there any? Are there any? Excuse me.
I do have one. It is my understanding that the signature gathering process for a statewide measure to reform Prop 47 has not qualified for the ballot yet, but is very, very close. Signature validity is coming in above 80%. And so I'm just wondering if we could be prepared for when that does qualify for the ballot to take a position in support. I think my colleagues would support me on that. So if it's possible for the city manager to start drafting some sort of resolution or letter or whatever to take a position on that statewide ballot measure.
Is there consensus on that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, we'll do.
Okay, city managers report.
Okay, thank you, mayor.
As if you haven't reported enough tonight.
The Aquatic Center kicked off the summer session Saturday, May 25th, with daily recreation swim available from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. through September 2nd. Guests can enjoy all the great amenities, the interactive play structure, diving boards, three pools, plenty of space to lounge in the sun or shade.
three pools, plenty of space to lounge in the sun or shade, poolside cafe, and a new giant inflatable obstacle course. The city's three spray parks opened last Friday. The Flume and Creek Water feature at Livermore Community Park and the splash pads at Kemp Park and Nisanon Park are open daily from 11:00 to 7:00, starting May 24th and continuing through September 27th. The Free Friday Evening Concert Series kicks off this season on Friday, June 14th, with the band Remedy 7, featuring a unique mix of classic rock, pop, country, blues, and original songs. The band plays from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. in Folsom City Lions Park. A big thank you to our Department of Public Works team and Clark Verkler from Docking Engineering for installing the flag on the Trust Bridge each year. The city will display the flag on the bridge through Veterans Day. The Summer Reading Challenge has begun. Folsom readers are encouraged to sign up to read or listen to five books in June and July. Kids and teens who complete the challenge win a free book, a book bag, and an entry into a drawing for an $100 gift card. Adults reading five books earn a book bag and an entry into the drawing, and you can find out more at folsom.ca.us/library. Traffic impacts at Folsom Boulevard and Blue Ravine Road can be expected as construction has been extended through Wednesday, unfortunately, due to unforeseen trench conditions and underground utility conflicts at the pipeline construction site. Crews will continue to work around the clock to reopen the roadway. PG&E will operate helicopters in Folsom the weekend of June 1st and 2nd to perform routine maintenance on electric transmission lines. The helicopters will operate from 8:00 to 1:00. The city is hosting a community open house Thursday, June 6th to present an update on the River District Master Plan and gather feedback from the community. That will be from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the community center. And finally, I just want to thank city attorney Steve Wong for his continued military service, which he balances with his enormous workload here. Steve returned literally yesterday from a near-month-long international deployment, one of many deployments he's had since I've known him over many years, in a country 6,000 miles away. So thank you, Steve, and go to sleep.
All right. Final thoughts, YK?
No, nothing much. I think Memorial Day was wonderful at Veterans VFW Hall. I'm glad, you know, we were able to represent the city of Folsom. That's awesome. And I attended the high school graduations for Vista as well as Folsom High. I just want to offer to my colleagues, you know, let's make this as a tradition. You know, they love to see us, you know. Yes, it is a school board thing, but those schools are in our town. Those parents are living in our town. They love to see, you know, any of you guys, because I won't be here next year, but I highly encourage, you know, our council to take into consideration. Mayor, I know during budget time, you were running out of time and you were pausing us and commenting. One offer I can make, since I can make this comment now, every time we project budgets in June, as the year goes, thanks to Stacy for kind enough conservative budget, we go above the preliminary projections. And I have a last 12 years' numbers, anywhere from $1.5 million to $5 million, we go more than projected in May and June.
Revenue.
Revenues. Did they say that? Thank you. I know we were all talking what to do with, you know, excess, you know, expenditure if all officers are working. What do we do with those three extra officers we are bringing? So this council can think about for next meeting, the first priority of any of those excess revenues to serve the deficit of the police department officers, and then we can spread. So think about it, because it is consistently coming every year over the projected revenues. Just want to put that thought in front of you, because, you know, hopefully we'll pass next meeting, our budget. Thank you. Okay.
Very good. Sarah, do you want to go?
Yeah, I just have a couple of things. So we're continuing our vice mayor lunches, and Jana Karpinski-Costa hosted us in Citrus Heights last week. Really interesting, you know, Citrus Heights has maybe one restaurant where you get table service. Every restaurant in their city is either a drive-through or you walk in and order at a counter. And so we had a nice lunch at a place called India Oven. It's an Indian buffet, but they have developed a plan to transform the current Sunrise Mall into, you know, a future, hopefully, destination, and they are really holding firm to no drive-throughs, because they do not have any sort of fine dining there. It's really, really interesting. They're also going to get their first hotel as a part of that project. But she extended the luncheon invitation to the vice mayor of Roseville and the vice chair of the Placer County Board of Supervisors, since they kind of abut Citrus Heights. And it was interesting to talk to the vice mayor of Roseville. They are seeing some of the same things that we are in terms of homelessness, a lot more transients coming through their town, not their, you know, their long-term homeless people in Roseville, and a younger crowd. So kind of interesting. Also, Chief Hillman was talking about, with respect to the hot team, what other cities are doing. City of Roseville does have a few service providers, so I'd be interested in learning a little bit more about that. And I just want to relay a really cute story that I think speaks very well to our city as a whole. But a former mayor walks every day to get his coffee, and the other day, when the police department had put out something that there was an elderly at-risk man missing, this former mayor was walking back to his house, and he had two motorcycle officers come on either side of him and say, "Are you so-and-so?" He said, "No." And they said, "Are you sure?" And he said, "Yes, I'm sure." And so they pulled out a picture, and they said, "Okay, yeah, yeah, you're right. You're not that person. Have a great day," or whatever, and they carried on. So he walks a little farther, and then somebody from our public works department stopped him and said, "Are you so-and-so?" And so I just thought it was so great that it wasn't just PD out there looking for this missing man, but our whole entire city, the public works department too. So he called to relay that story to me, and I'm telling you. So thank you.
Beautiful. Beautiful. Anna? Rosario?
Well, Steve, I want to say thank you for your service to our country. You are appreciated. And secondly is, I was really hoping that there would be a lot more people in the audience to really want to understand and be a part of this process, this budget process that is so important, because it drives so many of our conversations for the next 12 months. But, yeah, anyways, that's it.
Okay. Excellent. I also want to congratulate all our recent graduates from all the schools here in Folsom. Great job. I got the very lucky job of handing a proclamation out to an Eagle Scout on Saturday, who happened to also be on my track team at Vista del Lago, so it was like a double. It was a two-for. I got to be Mayor Coach K that day. And I also was at the VFW, and this year, we were not blessed with a bald eagle flying over with a salmon in his claws at the exact moment that our congressman took the podium, but it was great in spite of that. So do yourselves a favor someday and read in Flanders Fields, which is part of that presentation every year. So even if you don't go to the assembly at the VFW, get a feel for that. So anyway, congratulations. Thank you to all of our service members, Steve included, and everybody for their, the sacrifices that they've made in service to our country. And with that, we are adjourned.
Awesome.
YK?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to respectfully disagree with you.